You're you. Just let me know when you start.
Good morning, Matt. We're starting. And I can hear you. Hope you are doing well. Whoa.
Doing fine, thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. We're going to get used to this. Welcome to the September fourteen twenty twenty-four County Board meeting. And as probably everybody knows, I'm Board Chair Libby Garvey, and I've got my colleagues Vice Chair Takis Karantonos, and Susan Cunningham, and Maureen Coffey, and Matt DiFranti is participating remotely due to a temporary medical condition. Oh, you're having a hard time hearing? Okay, the thing was when I did it before it gave me feedback. Can you hear me all right in the back?
No.
No. All right. How about that? I'm so sorry. Okay. I'm not going to do the introductions again because you know who we are, and it's going to be a balance between you hearing me and the microphone. Yeah, maybe everybody else turn off their microphones. We'll see if that does it. Okay. Thank you to our Arlington Public School friends for offering this room to us. That's been a big, huge help. And while we have our own room is undergoing some changes and some little construction, so we can't be there. And I want to thank everybody for joining us here at the SciFAX Education Center. Some folks are participating virtually. And we're also, you know, we're doing our hybrid meeting, meeting model here. As I always say, masks are optional, but if you would like to wear a mask, that's fine. I believe they're still available from the clerk. You've got masks here if you need one. And a couple of announcements before we get started. In-person speakers, I think we have a few here. Please speak clearly into the microphone so everybody can hear you. If you've got documents to submit, you can give them to our clerk, Mr. Kushner, who's right here to my left. And please do put your name and contact information if you leave documents so we can get back in touch with you. For remote speakers, I think we have a few of those. Keep your microphones muted, please, and your cameras off, please, until you're called out to speak. And but you will need to unmute yourself, and if you're on just on the phone, you know, just use star six. And if you're on the Teams app, and if you've got the app on the bottom on the toolbar, just click to make sure you're you're on and not muted. There is, I believe, a Spanish-language interpreter available for the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have our? Could you stand up, please? Introduce yourselves and speak loudly. I wonder if our Spanish interpreters, if we need you, you might need to come up forward a little bit because we can't hear you all the way back there, if that's all right, okay? Maybe just come up on the staff side and say if we need you.
If somebody testifies, I'm sure we will have to.
Have to come up close. Okay, that will work. Yeah, thank you. A few other notes. From time to time, we get up and stretch our legs and go to the back, but there's speakers and monitors in the back, so you might not see us, but we can see and hear you. And a general reminder to folks, just on the purpose of our public comment period, and that's for individuals, people to alert the board to issues that have not been the subject of a recent public hearing and are not on the agenda. And we do have a rule to ensure that we can hear a range of topics, and that is that we have a one-speaker-per-topic rule. And that helps us get to the main point of the meeting. If folks want to talk to us, other than just testifying here, and actually, I think it can be much more effective, we've got a number of ways to do that. We've got Open Door Monday that folks can use, and of course, we're available for individual meetings at times if people would like. Just contact the board office or you talk to our clerk here. You can always get ahold of us. It's fairly simple. countyboard@arlingtonva.us. And that way you can have more of a dynamic conversation, which is better. If there's a group here, and I don't know that we have a group. Anyway, if you have a group, one person speaks, and everybody can signal their approval if they would like, and that way we can get through to our main agenda. So I think we're ready to move to public comment, and after we hear from every one of our speakers, I think we have a few, we will take a moment to respond to each of them at the end. So we listen to everybody, and then we respond. And I think with that, we're ready to call the first two public speakers. Mr. Kushner.
Yes, give me just one moment, please. Our first speaker is Tanya Flemmons, followed by Peter Evans.
Good morning. This is Tanya Flemmons. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can speak just a tiny bit louder maybe, but we can hear you.
Okay. In association with the eighteen forty infrastructure changes that were coming, we were alerted and wondered whether or not the, although we have an objection to any noise variance or establishment of any live entertainment venue associated with that property, our primary issue was the reciting of a bus stop from the west side of the roads at Wilson Boulevard to the east side, which is smack dab, less than twenty feet, and by less than twenty feet, I mean ten to fourteen feet, smack dab in front of bar, front-facing entry doorway. We wondered about the legitimacy of whatever considerations were under discussion in making such a decision. And quite frankly, we haven't heard anything. The issue seems to have gone underground or gone away or gone silent. And we haven't heard anything, whether or not there was a final resolution or whether it had been scrapped or shelved. But we wonder about the legitimacy or the substantiation of the need for, the necessity for such a movement. Because we believe that there are more problems associated than 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 anything else. Believe that the due process, we were left out entirely. And we believe that an in-situ resolution is probably preferable in keeping it in the courthouse neighborhood rather than migrating it over down to the Roslyn neighborhood. We seem that some of the reasons seem to favor bikers without due consideration to residents, pedestrians, drivers, bus drivers, and no protections afforded to pedestrians right away, driver's ability to safely perceive oncoming bikers in the lane, and no consideration for bus riders' real needs who are getting on and off buses and have to cross a biker lane to do so. If bikers are too inconvenienced to wait while boarding.
Thank you, Ms. Flemmons. Your time has elapsed.
Ms. Flemmons, we will respond to you. Thank you. We'll move on. We do we do limit the speakers to the time, but we will get back to you after we have heard from everybody. Thank you. And I think next is.
Our next speaker is Peter Evans, followed by Thomas Viles.
Thank you.
I don't know. I can't. Yep, there you go. All right. Just speak into the mic. Yep.
I'll just have to hunch over here.
Yep.
Good morning. I'm Peter Evans, and I thank you for these moments to think with you for a little bit about what more we can do together to promote a culture of gun safety in Arlington. I signed up to speak originally this morning because of the recent school shooting tragedy in Georgia. But then recently found out that just last Tuesday, police officers were called to a domestic violence situation in my own neighborhood. After getting a search warrant, they removed a loaded assault weapon with a drum magazine. And my neighbor was arrested not only for reckless handling of a firearm, but for assault and battery. So gun violence is a serious threat in Arlington. Since I was one of the Arlington volunteers that helped staff your first gun buyback event last June, I want to thank you again, along with the police chief, our sheriff, and the county manager for making such a successful event. They got so many unneeded guns out of our community. Susan Koch has produced a very nice summary of the lessons we think we should learn from that first experience. And I know she's shared that with you, and we're happy to share that with any of the interested public. But with that in mind, I think it's time to start planning the next gun buyback. So I'm here to ask if Mr. Schwartz would propose a schedule so that Arlington's next gun buyback can get organized, and we can work together again to remove more unneeded guns from our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Viles, followed by Aseem Rawat.
Good morning. Late September, two hundred thirty-five years ago, Congress passed what we know as the U.S. Constitution's First Amendment. Actually, in the Engrossed Bill of Rights, it was the Third Amendment, but never mind. These days, sadly, you can't go one waking hour, it seems, without hearing about some outrage by haters of free expression. There's no end to the busybodies who are out there demanding that books be removed from public libraries. We see states and local authorities pushing policies like "Don't say gay", officials policing the mention of political race theory in public forums, efforts to stifle information concerning matters like sexuality, contraception, and abortion, police raids on local media offices, municipal officials keeping the local press from doing its indispensable job, tarring challengers of official policy as subversers of democracy. And during the last presidential administration, we read of several attempts to remove unwelcome public comments from government-sponsored media. Fortunately, and I should add a cautionary to so far, this last bit of official overreaching was reduced to constitutional invalidity. Imagine a government official creating a public forum and then selectively purging the comments that don't feel right. It seems that lots of folks don't want people to think too much or to understand anything that's important. It's literally reactionary to censor ideas, not because they are irrational and not because they don't stand up to reason, but because they just don't feel right. Censorship is literally a reaction, a reflex, and ideas that threaten the politically powerful are particularly obnoxious. In coming months, I'll try to use this occasion to survey the relevance of the First Amendment to aspects of our county's affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viles.
Our next speaker is Aseem Rawat, followed by Audrey Clement.
Morning.
Good morning.
Back at the July Board meeting, in response to a public comment on rent, Mr. Karen Tox has stated, "What makes rent so high is the fact that we have underproduced housing for decades. We are hundreds of thousands of units behind, and this produces this absolute crisis right now. At the same time you're advocating for tenants' rights, please don't forget the production side," end quote. So if I understand correctly, we need more production because all our current stock is occupied, and that would mean that there are not many vacant apartment units. I'm not sure how to square that with the business practices of a company like RealPage and their clients. The DOJ and the DCAG's office have both initiated legal proceedings against RealPage. In fact, the DCAG's office found that RealPage sets rent prices for more than ninety percent of apartments in the D.C. metro area. Do we know what that percentage is for just Arlington? Are these guys on our radar in any meaningful way? Because I don't think this is something the production side can fix. Based on RealPage's publicly available data from August, I found that there are more than fifteen hundred vacant units in just North Arlington alone. Do we know how many vacant units are in Arlington, all of Arlington, not just North Arlington? For reference and comparison, the local council of governments report from earlier this year estimated Arlington's homeless population at two hundred and forty-three people. Although it's just for reference and comparison, I think we all know there's a violent through line. As a separate point of reference on addressing violence and security, we've seen Arlington expend immense resources on the Key Bridge Marriott site and employ a whole-of-government approach to secure property. I mostly bring this up because it would be nice to see the same level of creativity, energy, and focus directed against businesses like RealPage so we can secure those vacant units and secure fair, affordable rent. Production without fair, affordable rent only leads to more violent displacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawat.
Our next speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by Joanne Johnson.
Well, members of the board and the county manager, I'm Audrey Clement, the independent candidate for county board. Like illegal border crossings, which rose from four hundred thousand in 2020 to three point two million in 2023, fentanyl overdose deaths are marching steadily up an asymptotic curve. The National Institute on Drug Abuse reported seventy-three thousand deaths in 2022 due to synthetic opioids, primarily fentanyl. To most people, fentanyl and the open southern border through which it flows is an easily forgotten statistic. Occasionally, the impact registers on ordinary citizens like the sixty-something-year-old panhandler I recently encountered outside Walgreens. Usually, she is looking for bus fare to get to the doctor, but last Friday, she was looking for bus fare to Philly, where her five-year-old grandson was left to die in the ICU of a local hospital. Police brought him there after a 911 call reported a child crying in an apartment building. There, they found him near death, having been beaten to a pulp by his drug-abusing mother. The child had bruises and broken bones all over his body. Yet according to the grandmother, her own son abandoned the child because he too was strung out. Now she was in tears, begging for bus fare to Philly to see the kid before he died, even as she herself was scheduled for major surgery the following week. No, I am not making this up. I gave the woman my loose change, and another bystander said he would give her the rest of the cash she needed to get to Philly. While county board has no jurisdiction over this matter, it can lobby Virginia senators to pass H.R. Two, an immigration bill with teeth, passed by the U.S. House of Representatives in 2023, that will shut down the border and end the flow of fentanyl across it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clement.
Our next speaker is Joanne Johnson, followed by Beatrice Batras.
Ms. Johnson? Oh, yes, that's fine.
Good morning. My name's Joanne Johnson. I've lived in Arlington since nineteen eighty-nine. I've lived at my house at ten seventeen Seventeenth Street since two thousand and nine. I'm here to talk about the EHO process and permit. I am not here to talk or express any concerns about affordable housing. I've been an avid volunteer all of my life. I bought my house at forty-three after paying off all my student loans. I'm a good citizen. I'm an honest taxpayer. I've been a public servant for twenty-five years. I think it's very important to be here to discuss reasonableness, a reasonable management process, and fairness. In this particular instance of the EHO permit next to my house, I really urge the members to please take a field trip to my neighborhood and look. This is not like whatever the other situations are. I can't attest to any of them, but I can talk about mine. I have a picture up there. You can see my house is to the left, the other house is to the right. Twelve hundred square foot house is approximately. That house in the middle, maybe fourteen hundred square foot. Very narrow street, lots of cars for our own houses, for our own cars to park. One gentleman lived there, one gentleman lived on the other side, and I am single and live on that side. I bought my house expecting to age in place once I retire. It's one level. It helps me. This, what they're putting there in place of that house, they have to squeeze it in sideways to fit, is almost seventy-eight hundred square foot apartment building. That's two of the apartments are three-bedroomed that are two levels each. And then the ones on top, there are four, and they're two-bedroomed, so there could be approximately twenty-four people or more who could live in that building right next to me. What are we going to do about parking? What are we going to do about the noise? That's going to be, I implore you to think of your own homes, six HVAC machines right next to me.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Your time has elapsed.
She can go just a tiny bit longer. That's all right. Go ahead. Couple more minutes. Two seconds.
Six HVAC machines next to me. Even if you lined up the six recycling carts or the six trash carts, that's, the sketch doesn't do it justice. You can't even fit it in the width of the property.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for coming to let us know about this. We'll talk about it in just a minute. Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Take your time. Go ahead. We're just fine.
It also was no notice. I just learned a week ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is Beatrice Batras, followed by Esther N.
Buenos dias a todos. A pocas semanas de las elecciones presidenciales, nos preocupa el silencio de la junta ante nuestra petición, que desde hace varios meses hemos, no hemos ni siquiera recibido el borrador de la actualización de la póliza de la confianza, y como nuestra comunidad está desprotegida de inminentes ataques como redadas a nuestras comunidades y lugares de trabajo. Como todos sabemos, por décadas han utilizado a nuestras comunidades migrantes para llegar al poder o usarlas como ejemplos de ser peligrosos, cosa que no es cierto. Es sabido por todos que no existen leyes locales ni federales que obligue a la policía local a colaborar con ICE. Sin embargo, ustedes pueden cambiar esto y votar por la seguridad de la comunidad a la que sirven. Al remover la sección siete, aceptar una gama de diferentes IDs, van a demostrar que son políticos diferentes, que ustedes sí les interesa la comunidad y no son los típicos políticos que mienten, engañan para lograr votos y después se olvidan de los compromisos con la comunidad. Eso es un legado que ustedes pueden ofrecer a la comunidad y serán recordados o serán rechazados. Le surgimos a remover la sección siete y a garantizar la seguridad de nuestras familias porque ningún niño, ninguna familia merece ser separada. En el dos mil veintidós, la policía contactó a ICE con seis personas. En el dos mil veintitrés fueron siete, y en lo que va de este año han habido nueve contactos. Esto es a través de los FOIAs que hemos requerido a través de nuestros abogados. Son documentos que salen de ustedes y le surgimos a que hagan este cambio por nuestras comunidades porque su compromiso es para las comunidades migrantes y decir que Arlington son comunidades bienvenidas a los migrantes.
Gracias. Or on inglés?
Okay, I'll interpret now. A few weeks before the presidential election, we are concerned about your silence on our petition and that for several months, we have not received the draft of the updates to the trust policy and how the immigrant community in Arlington is unprotected from attacks such as raids in our community and workplaces. As we all know, for decades, politicians have used migrant communities to get into power or use them as examples of being dangerous, which is not true. It is common knowledge that there is no local or federal law that forces police to collaborate with ICE. And however, and you can vote for the safety of our community you serve by removing section seven and accepting a range of different IDs and demonstrating that you are different politicians who care about the community and are not the typical politicians who lie and cheat to get votes and then forget your commitment to the community. This is the legacy for which you'll be remembered or discarded, and we urge you to remove section seven and ensure the safety of our families. No child deserves to grow up in a separated family. In 2022, the police contacted ICE for six people. In 2023, seven people. So far, in 2024, nine people. These are from the FOIAs we received from the police department. Every one of these cases is separating families and our community. We need ICE. We need action now. ICE out of Arlington.
Thank you.
And our final public comment speaker is Esther N.
Buenos dias. La junta del condado de Arlington está comprometida a velar por los derechos de los inclinos de barro. de Barcroft. En diciembre del 2021 aprobaron un préstamo de ciento cincuenta millones de dólares de fondos públicos y no preguntaron a los inquilinos de Barcroft sin la aprobación de la comunidad. Eso ha generado que muchos inquilinos se han visto forzados a dejar sus unidades porque es, no, no son asequibles. Instamos a la junta del condado a tomar acción y a congelar el incremento de la renta. Año con año, el costo incrementa, pero no hemos visto ninguna mejora. Al contrario, el servicio es deficiente. El personal en la oficina es racista y clasista. Exigen documentos que comprueben nuestros ingresos anuales. Han habido casos de acoso hasta que la gente se muestra y, y desafortunadamente, han terminado en intento de suicidio por la desesperación de no encontrar un lugar para mudarnos. Debemos pagar por tener aire acondicionado y calefacción. Cuando deja obligación de ellos asegurarse de tener las unidades habitables. El parqueo es otro problema. Nos reclaman, nos, nos remolcan nuestros vehículos en horas no adecuadas. Por eso exigimos que tomen responsabilidad y escuchen a los inquilinos. No queremos ser desplazados. Son nuestros impuestos los que se usan, y es nuestra comunidad la que sufre. Exigimos congelar el incremento a la renta ade- adecuando mantenimiento a los aires, y de acuerdo a lo, al mantenimiento de los aires acondicionados, y que los horarios de las grúas cambien de once de la noche a siete de la mañana. Pagamos por todo esto, merecemos respeto y dignidad. Ustedes aprobaron ese préstamo, tienen la responsabilidad de asegurarse de nuestro bienestar. Queremos que nos incluyan en la toma de decisiones para nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias. On inglés.
The Arlington County Board is committed to looking out for the rights of Barcroft tenants. In December 2021, they approved one hundred and fifty million dollar funds that came from the public funds. They need to ask the tenants and non-resident members of Arlington County, let alone the Barcroft community, if they approve this loan. That has generated many, that many tenants have been forced to leave their units because it's not affordable. We urge the county board to take action and freeze the rent increase. In the same time, in the same way, they approve public funds. The reality for tenants in Barcroft is that year after year, the cost increases, but we have not seen any improvement in the units. On the contrary, the service is poor, the staff in the office is racist and racist, and demanding documents to prove our annual income. There were being cases of harassment until people show up. Unfortunately, it has ended in suicide, suicidal attempts, due to desperation of not finding place to move. We must pay to have our air-conditioned heating when there is their obligation of the company to provide habitable units. Parking is another problem. They tow our vehicles in inappropriate hours, so we demand that they take their responsibility and listen to the tenants. We don't want to be displaced.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming in, and I appreciate the groups of people who have indeed just signaled that they're here in support and helped us move through these comments, I appreciate that very much. And I'll just go through and ask my comments, ask my colleagues or staff to also comment if they would like. First, we had Tanya Flemons, and she was concerned about a bus stop. I am not familiar with that particular bus stop, and asked about how bus stop placements are made, and what's happening with this particular bus stop. I believe we have Ms. Flemons' contact information, Mr., we do?
Yes, we do.
Good, so that we can follow up with her, and I don't know, Mr. Schwartz, if you've got anything you want to add on how we choose bus stops, and we will follow up with her, because I'm not familiar with this.
I do not, but I think she's talking about the bus stop that's at the intersection of Wilson Boulevard and North Roads, and my understanding, which I can be correct on later, is there's been no final decision made. As a matter of fact, the latest information I had is that there would be, hold on, I just got an answer.
Okay, yeah, good, 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 yeah, thank you.
Yeah, there, give me thirty seconds, move on to the next one, and so I can absorb this.
All right, and so Ms. Flemons is here, we'll come back, okay. Next, we had Peter Evans, who's been here many times talking about gun safety, and actually had a lot to inspire and help us and support us getting the gun buyback program in June, which was incredibly successful. In fact, I think they had to close it early because they ran out of the resources they needed to do the program. I'm assuming we're doing another gun buyback program, that we'll be doing it again, but I'm not sure when that is, and I don't know if anyone here does know, Mr. Schwartz.
I talked with Mr. Evans, it's, we're definitely starting the conversation right now, it looks like the spring will be when it's going to happen, we will try to expedite that, but there's a lot of process involved with that, but I have had a conversation with the police chief and with Aaron Miller, my deputy, and we'll get back, Mr. Evans knows, and he's been talking with Aaron Miller about that, so we're aiming for the early spring if we can.
Thank you, thank you very much, and we do that in cooperation with Falls Church City, I believe, is that correct? And I think that's really, that's really good, spreading it around, and I, you know, I appreciate you talking about how, you know, gun violence is a serious, it's a serious threat everywhere, because the absolutely bonkers lack of regulation of guns we have in this country, which is appalling, and we do do what we can here, and we appreciate your support in doing that, and we will continue, as you heard, we will be doing another gun buyback program. Colleagues, interrupt me if there's anything anybody wants to add as I move through here. We had Thomas Viles come and talk to about, talk to us about the importance of free expression and freedom of speech, and that is an issue in this country. We did pass a resolution, and I'm going to need some help on exactly the, the name of it, but actually for our libraries, declaring that our libraries are areas where there is free speech, our librarian particularly has been very, very, really out there about making sure that all voices are heard and that there is no censorship, and people can read what they want, when they want, at, really at any time. So we take free expression very seriously here, and of course, do not, and do not censor things here in Arlington. Then we had Mr. Massino Awut, I think, talking about the issue of production side on housing and a company called RealPage, which I gather has got, is maybe, as he thinks, doing some rate setting that's making it harder for people to get lower rents, and asked about vacant units in Arlington. I believe we do keep track of how many vacant units there are in Arlington, but I'm not positive about that, and I will turn again to Mr. Schwartz to see if he has any information on that.
We do, it's, it's sort of a very gross level, but we don't have that fine level of detail. I'm not familiar, I was checking the webs, I'm not familiar with the website that he mentioned, but we'll take a look and see what we can find out about that report.
Thank you, and we'll surprise no one, I think my colleague, my vice chair, is familiar with this website, so, Mr. Carantonas, go ahead.
I wanted to our colleague, Ms. Coffey first, and then I will add that there is something to be added.
These are different microphones, and it's very disorienting. I will share the ProPublica article with all of you from last year. RealPage is a big problem. I wish Virginia had an attorney general like DC has to prosecute the case. Arlington County is not able to do that, we just don't have the rights in the court, we don't have standing to do that. I think one of the problems with RealPage, right, is like, we get information reported by landlords, we don't, we don't survey ourselves to see, like, is this vacant or not, and so if RealPage, they use an algorithm, they use anti-competitive practices in order to, you know, if you have all twenty landlords within Arlington using the same software that says you can charge people more, then they're going to figure out ways to make that happen, and as an individual actor, as a renter, you don't have much capacity to be like, hey, no, that's inflated, I don't think that's the right price, it's, you pay the price or you have nowhere to live. And so I think this is a really big issue, I don't think it negates the, the supply issue, I think it also doesn't negate the affordability issue, as much as we could have many, many vacant units within Arlington, if people can't afford to live in those units, it's not going to matter. And so it's, it's all part of the problem. I'm hopeful that in 2025, we will get a new attorney general who is interested in prosecuting this case, but it's also part of why I'm talking with our general assembly members and looking forward to our legislative package about how we can add protections for renters into Virginia state code, because right now, we are probably one of the worst states in the entire country when it comes to how our state code protects renters. Our Tenant-Landlord Act is really weak, there are protections that exist in Texas for renters that do not exist in Virginia. And I think that says a lot about how strong property rights are here, in a way that significantly disadvantages individual people, people of low and modest income, and so I'm always interested in talking about how we can strengthen our rights as renters, because it's, it is really important, and it's really destabilizing, and it impacts your mental health and your economic health and pretty much every single other part of your life.
Thank you very much, it does sound like the state code may be the direction we need to go. Mr. Carantonas.
So thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Awut. RealPage is a real scandal. This affects the entire United States, as you know, this is a type of software, it's basically an inventory management system for units, for rental units, right? They're commodified and they are managed through a software that all major, you know, owners use, and it happens that in the District of Columbia, these are pretty much, you know, the same companies that also operate in Arlington, Virginia, so we have all reasons to be worried and very concerned that accusations, at this point, still accusations of collusion and price fixing are happening, you know, beyond the boundaries of the District of Columbia. Production is intimately, you know, inherently connected to that, because when a good is scarce, then, yeah, there is a market for this kind of price fixing, right? So if, if housing wouldn't be so scarce, then there would be less of an economic motive to do that. So yes, they are completely connected issues. For myself, I say, I want to say that I'm observing what hap, what's happening there a lot, I'm asking our major housing providers here about their vacancy rates, there is something in the market that, especially for people who rent, sounds very brutal. There was an old rule of thumb that said of, if vacancy is under ten percent, then the rent is too low. That means that the moment that the vacancy, or let's say, demand is less than a certain degree, the landlord will tend to junk up the rent. And if we see a market like now, or, I mean, read the press, we have had, you know, week after week, in the economic and in the normal civilian press, articles about how outrageously high rents are. So this is a real problem, and thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sure we're going to be hearing more about this, and appreciate, appreciate that. And Mr. Roat, thank you for coming and bringing this up, bringing it to our attention for all of us. Mr. Schwartz, I believe you found information for Ms. Flemons about the bus stop.
Yes. So that particular bus stop will not be relocated, there had been a planning process about it, and the decision was made not to relocate it. Just to reassure her, we have her contact information, and we'll have someone call her on Monday with all the details of where we are and the broader planning process on the intersection of Rhodes and Wilson.
All right, thank you very much, that's very helpful. And then that comes to Audrey Clement, Ms. Clement was here to talk about variety of difficult, one difficult life situation and the drug epidemic, that there's, I think we're doing a lot that we can't, I'm going to just take the opportunity here to talk again about Narcan, which I carry around in my purse, we've been really trying hard to make sure that everybody has, that Narcan is everywhere in this county, so that if someone's suffering from a drug overdose, they can be, hopefully, with, at least through fentanyl, can be revived with Narcan, and I would like to encourage everyone, we do training programs, it's available everywhere, I think everybody needs to have Narcan with them at all times, because this is a very serious epidemic affecting really everyone in this country, and there are, there's no one easy solution, but I think a community that comes together, and as I say, if everybody's got Narcan, that would be, that helps, and we already are seeing some diminution in, in the deaths here, but one is obviously too many. Then that brings me to Ms. Beatrice, who was talking about the trust policy and ICE, and we've been hearing a lot from folks recently about this, it's an ongoing issue, we do a lot to try to support the immigrant community, we do not cooperate with ICE beyond what we, is required by law. Mr. Carantonas has been working very closely on this, and I will ask him to make some comments.
So, two notes on that. As, as you probably know, there was a, an opinion by the Attorney General of Virginia that is very concerning, it is not binding in any, but we need to evaluate what it says about this. I would invite you to come to my office hours, and open door Monday, we are basically ready to release the, the tweaks that we want to make to the, to the trust pol, to the existing trust policies, not that we don't have one. And the, the idea is to share them with the community. I talked with Ms. Corb, our county attorney, and she suggested that we publish them for the next board meeting, and then in a, in a form of advertisement, we don't have to advertise this kind of policy changes, but she suggested that is a good, a good idea to do that, and then adopt them in November. That's, that's the pathway right now.
Thank you, appreciate your work on that, so we are going to be publishing it, talking about it in, in our meeting in November. I think the bottom line is that we do nothing more than we have to, as required by law, we are required to follow the law, there may be problems with the law, and we try to change that, but as long as it's the law, we need to follow it. And then that brings us to Ms. Esther N. Yes, oh, yes.
Well, did you skip Ms. Johnson?
Who did I skip? Oh, Ms. Johnson, I'm so sorry, thank you. Looking, yes, Ms. Johnson, I'm so sorry, nobody's going to let me skip, but that's fine, yes, I'm so sorry. Ms. Johnson came to talk to us about the, the EHO permit, the building going up next to her. I do not know about this particular building, I'll see if staff do, I do know that an EHO permit is not the same as a building permit, and that the EHO, the changes that we made, nothing can be built as a, as a, as an EHO building with a permit that is any different from what could be built as a single-family house there, they're not allowed to build any bigger, they have to follow the same rules for parking and trash, et cetera. And again, you get an EHO permit, and then you have to get a building permit, and that does not always happen, and I will invite either the manager or perhaps one of our staff to, if they'd like to talk or comment a little bit about it, they may not, we may not know about this particular, your particular situation, and we'll check into that later on. Mr. Schwartz, I don't know if there's anything I want to add, or Mr. Free.
I don't, I don't have full information on it, I know that the, at least the initial approval, approval was given to this, but I don't know whether the follow-on building and other permit approvals have been given, but we have, her information, we'll be back in touch with her.
Okay, thank you, we will be in touch, and we will check, and colleagues want to say anything else on this one, and thank you for reminding me, I would have realized it by the time I got to the end, thank you for coming, Ms. Johnson, I know it wasn't easy for you today. And then I think that does bring us to Ms. Esther N., who came to talk about Barcroft and concern about issues there, and I, we have worked, as concluding saying no displacement there, we are not, not doing displacement there, there are some rules, people do have to pay some rent, we do have some rules that we follow, trying very hard to work with that community and make sure there is no unnecessary displacement at all, and there has been very little, and I will turn to Mr. Carantonas, who would like to say something.
Ms. Esther has brought up some things that I consider very concerning. She talked to us about how staff is in, at Barcroft, is treating residents, she even brought up, you know, issues of extreme, you know, stress, so you talk about suicidal attempts, et cetera, this is very serious. I would be very interested to hear it firsthand from her, if she has the time to do that. I am available to hear that. To be clear, we don't hear it from a lot of people, but I take every single one very seriously when they present a very stressful situation in Barcroft, which we definitely have done everything possible to avoid until now.
Thank you, yeah, we do take it seriously, we do check into it, and we will, and Mr. DeFranti, I'm sorry if I've been missing your hand for a while, I know you'd like to speak, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll keep my remarks brief, I just wanted to indicate to the public that I, and to colleagues as well as you, Madam Chair, that have been listening to all of the comments made. One item that I did want to comment briefly on with respect to Ms. Johnson, you described it aptly. it aptly. Madam Chair, I will seek to go by 1013 South 17th Street to take a look at it. I do, or 10, I think 1017. I've got the address and I've already emailed my aide to at least, to take a look at it. I agree with your point that it's, there's difference between an EHO permit and a building permit. I will note that with a six-plex, if that is what was approved, there are slightly different onsite parking requirements. And so, happy to take a look and follow up and mindful that we both do have a housing supply challenge, also heard Ms. Johnson's concerns. So, thanks for the opportunity just to chat, to mention that and listen to all of the public speakers. Grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeFranti. And that reminds me, I should warn Ms. Johnson, you may have a number of drive-bys, board members kind of driving by your house and taking a look at it. Just, don't be alarmed if we do that, all right? Thank you. I think that, yes, Ms. Coffey.
I was going to add, on the residents of Barcroft, I'm the liaison for the Tenant-Landlord Commission and I know our Chair of the Commission is really interested in how we can be better advocates. And so, Mr. Karen Tonnus already offered, but I'm happy to meet with anyone and kind of talk through and see what we can do. It's, I know that it's, it's very intimidating to go to your own landlord, but potentially mediating something and figuring out whether there is, is anything that we can do here. I think especially the AC and heating things, those are things that we have pretty strong guidelines on. And so, making sure that, you know, some things we just don't have the legal protections for, but for the things we do, making sure that everyone is doing things by the book, I'm very happy to meet with you and figure out what it is we can do there. So.
Thank you. Do you want to talk about the Tenant-Landlord Commission just a little bit? Might be good to remind people that exists and they might like to participate.
Sure. Yeah, so we have a Tenant-Landlord Commission, which is separate from the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission. It exclusively deals with renter issues, the relationship between tenants and landlords, and it's been, it's been a good venue for handling not-so-great tenant situations in the past. It's comprised of both renters, community members, as well as landlords, not necessarily your landlord, fortunately. But we convene, talk about the different issues that are going on. There's always space for public comment during the Tenant-Landlord Commission meetings. And so, you can bring any issue, you don't have to sign up ahead of time, you can just come and share what's going on and they can help connect with resources as well as be your advocates. And so, we, yeah, we are always, always welcoming people to show up to those meetings. I don't have it in front of me right now, but the Commission meetings are all on the county website. And so, yeah, I'm happy to connect and provide further, further information in writing, which I know is always a little bit more helpful than us just talking at you right now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coffey. I think, you know, over the years, different Commissions come to the fore, depending on what the issues are going on. And I expect Tenant-Landlord to be a much more active, it's been, not that it's been inactive, but I think it's going to be much more a focus moving forward, given where we are. All right, I think that.
Madam Chair, may I add?
Yes, please, Ms. Cunningham.
So, first of all, on Commissions in general, we have a lot of vacancies on our Commissions. I think we're going to talk about it a little bit more on Tuesday, but for those who are here today and don't want to come back for another meeting Tuesday, you can find the vacancies on our website and we will be pushing that out a little bit more this fall as well as we come out of the COVID era and kind of re-energize our Commissions. So, if Tenant-Landlord or any other topic is of great interest to you, please consider attending a meeting or applying to be a Commissioner. Also, I wanted to add on the, on EHO, also on Tuesday, the manager will be giving us a somewhat of an update and then I guess a foretaste of the official year-one update to come, or report, I guess, to come later this, this fall. And as part of that, we will also reiterate, as we've done every two months this year, how to, how to look up something on, on the EHO dashboard. So, it is a by right development, but the information is available to you if you go to look for it. And I see you've done a FOIA request to make sure that the details are there. We are working through that and know it's very disorienting and anxiety-producing for neighbors and we are continuing to work through that. I can see that this particular project did have a lot of rounds of discussion before it even made through the EHO permit. So, it's, it's right at 53% lot coverage. So, it is an example of the first time through, we're going to learn a lot, I think. But I appreciate the anxiety and the concern and I know that the staff and the board will be watching it carefully.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Any other comments at the moment? All right. Again, thank you all for coming in, really. Appreciate you bringing, this is again, as I started out, to saying, to bring to our attention items that we might not be aware of, and I think that absolutely happened today. Really appreciate it and I appreciate everybody. I know some of you came in groups that feel strongly about issues and I appreciate you, you know, signaling your support but allowing us to continue with the meeting. So, thank you very much. We will now move on with the meeting. You all, I'm sure it's going to be thrilling. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, that's all right, too. So, thank you very much. And so, that gets us to our consent agenda now, I think. Mr. Kushner, have any items been pulled from our consent agenda?
Yes, there have, if you give me just a moment. Four items have been removed. Items number one, number eight, number 19, and number 20. Item number one is the Phase Development Site Plan Amendment, amending Pentagon City Phase Development Site Plan for a portion of partial 1C, altering allocation of uses, permitting additional density and building height, and to adopt design guidelines for an area known as 12th Street Landing. Item eight is the Millennium at National Landing at 1330 South Fair Street, 1301, 1221, and 1311 South Fern Street. And then items number 19 and 20, pardon me, are both memorandums of agreement between Arlington County Government and, for item 19, the Arlington Sports Foundation, and for number 20, the Arlington Soccer Association, excuse me, concerning collaboration on synthetic turf conversion of the combination field number one and rectangle field number two at Kenmore Middle School.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kushner. So, those four items will be heard later, I'll talk about, on Tuesday, but I'll talk about that in a minute. So, colleagues, I'll just go ahead and move adoption of the consent agenda, the consent agenda with the, without the items 1, 8, 19, and 20, as outlined by Mr. Kushner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been moved and second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair, may I ask a question before?
Before voting?
Yes.
Okay.
There are a few items on the consent agenda that community members have raised a concern in that there are deferrals, but they're still on.
And I'm going to speak to that.
You're going to speak to that.
I am, yes, I am.
Then I would also vote yes.
Both, yes, thank you. All right, motion passes. Oh, Mr. DeFranti, how do you vote?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, motion passes 5-0 on that. Thank you. And then I will talk about the, I've got actually a number of comments on the consent agenda because, just because it's a consent agenda, doesn't mean that it's not controversial, not important. It just means that generally they're non-controversial and there are a few things that people wanted to talk about when we pulled them off, so they're not on consent anymore. And I will say for them, items that we've pulled out, we will hold a public hearing on those as we have, you know, a hearing on the items coming up today, on these items 1, 8, 19, and 20. And that will be at our recess board meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, and the public hearing will begin no earlier than 6:30. And I realize I need to ask our clerk, is that going to be here in this room? I believe it is.
That will be here in this room.
And we'll be right back here where we are. So, if you've got an interest in speaking to either items 8, 1, 8, 19, or 20 on the consent agenda, please sign up to speak if you would like to. And again, the public hearing will begin no earlier than 6:30 on Tuesday. And you can register on our board, the website on, online if you'd like. You can talk to our clerk here or call the Board Office, 703-228-3130, to register to speak on Tuesday about those items. And I will go on, I think it's at the end. I know I have a comment here on some things. A couple of the consent items were actually deferrals. So, there were two items that we're going to be considering in October. I will talk about that. And that with this vote, we voted to defer those items to October, when they will come forward at our October board meeting, not at the Tuesday meeting. Okay, I'll go over a number of the things. I think we have some slides to show. First, I'll just start talking about kind of good news, childcare permit renewals, and actually a new requirement. That's not the correct slide. Let's see, I think it's back to the beginning. Oh, maybe we don't have a slide for these. We might not.
It's quite possible.
It's quite possible we don't. I'll just talk about it. We, on childcare renewals, one of the things that we need different, we have a new requirement for childcare centers. And that is that they sign up for Arlington Alert. And for those of you who don't know, Arlington Alert is a free program. It sends alerts to residents about, and you get them on your phone or your computer, about severe traffic disruptions, hazardous weather emergencies, and a lot more. And I would advise everybody listening to this message, if you're not signed up for Arlington Alert, sign up now. So, if something is happening, we've got, you know, a busy fall coming up with elections and with possible hurricanes. They've said it's going to be a busy hurricane season, hasn't been so far, but that doesn't mean we won't get one. So, it's just really good to be signed up for Arlington Alert for individuals, but we are now actually requiring it for childcare centers so that it will keep our childcare providers informed of major, major events or any kind of road conditions that they need to know and will help them in their decision-making when, when caring for the children they serve. Next, and we do have a slide for this one, I saw it. And this was a, what is called a Utility Coordination Agreement for the Long Bridge Project. And we authorized here, I'm just highlighting it because this is such a major project, this is just a small piece of having it move forward. We authorized a utility coordination agreement between the county and the Virginia Passenger Railway Authority for the Long Bridge Project. And this is just an administrative action, which is required to access and accommodate and relocate if necessary county utilities and trail lights that might conflict with this project. It's quite a large project when it's being built, but this is just an opportunity to talk about a little bit. For those who don't know, the Commonwealth of Virginia, Amtrak, Virginia Railway Express, and the federal government will be providing $2.3 billion, that's with a B, to make several rail improvements along the corridor. And what is, one is adding a new two-track railroad bridge next to the existing Long Bridge Park across the, Long Bridge, excuse me, across the Potomac River. And this will really increase the rail capacity. And actually, it doesn't say here in my notes, but I, my understanding is that this Long Bridge is actually the bottleneck on the whole East Coast for rail traffic. So, this is actually, it's not just for Arlington and the district or even just for Virginia, it is for the whole eastern seaboard and a really important, an important project, which is part of the reason the federal government is willing to help us and kick in here. And it will really help alleviate congestion along this, along this corridor. Other improvements include, which we pushed for a lot, separate bike and pedestrian bridge. So, you can nicely, you'll be able to walk and bike across the river and not feel like you're about to get, you might conflict with either train traffic or car traffic and it should make a much better experience as it, and it will connect our Long Bridge Park and Mount Vernon Trail to DC's East and West Potomac Parks. So, this is just a small part on that voyage, but we really are moving forward, which is really exciting. Okay, then we had items 25, 26, and 27 were grants for historic preservation. During the budget, the County Board earmarked a few funds for several small but really important projects dedicated to preserving and sharing Arlington's history. And we authorized the county manager to execute the following grant agreements of one-time funding. For one, $25,000 to support overhead costs for Arlington's Black Heritage Museum, and that will allow its team of volunteers to continue their important work of preserving historic items and providing educational opportunities for the, for the community. Also, $25,000 towards the renovation, preservation, or, and/or restoration of the historic Hume School Building. And this is home to the Arlington Historic Society. And it's one of the few remaining school buildings featuring 19th century masonry in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I believe it's the oldest school building by far here in Arlington that still stands. Funding will pay for things like waterproofing the building's foundation, preserving its bell tower and roof ornamentation. If you haven't visited the Hume School, it's really interesting and fun and you can see that it needs some, some TLC and we're helping out with that a little bit. And then finally, $15,000 to the Arlington Historical Society's project to construct 30 stumbling stones. This is following, stumbling stones is a term that came from Germany, Stoppelstein, is that right?
Stoppelstein.
Stoppelstein. And in Germany, these are used to memorialize victims of the Holocaust. And here, we're using it to memorialize enslaved people who lived in Arlington. Project's part of the Historic Society's ongoing work with Arlington Public Schools. That's one of the coolest parts of this whole grant and project, I think. And students design and locate and research and help install these stones. So, it's a great partnership and it will also fund educational materials, stipends for the students who are collaborating on the project. All right, that brings me to an FTA grant agreement. And this again is, I think, where we have to vote to accept money, always one of the easier votes we have, for the Crystal City East Metro Entrance. And it was an agreement with the Federal Transit Administration and appropriates almost $21 million in funding towards the construction of the new east entrance to the Crystal City Metro Rail Station. And that will improve transit accessibility and connectivity in Crystal City, which is an area that's getting, National Landing area, getting busier and busier. It pulls together two sources of funding. 80% comes from the FTA and 20% from the Department of Rail and Public Transport, Transportation, a Virginia organization, which were, these were committed by the Commonwealth towards this project. And it fulfills a portion of the $82.5 million outlined in the Commonwealth's 2019 agreement with Amazon. So, this is actually continuing to fulfill our agreement that helped encourage Amazon to come here and we keep getting benefits from that, including support to build a much-needed east entrance to a metro station. Item 32 is food security mini-grant awards, and we approved 11 small food security mini-grants to the community organizations. The total is $150,000 and it supports our Department of Human Services Food Security Strategic Plan. And these are annual mini-grants and they're meant to fund creative local proposals, you can see a local garden there, that address food insecurity in Arlington. Among the community-led initiatives we're supporting are a Fresh Food Explorers Program for preschoolers and their families, a project for Meals on Wheels to provide shelf-stable backup meals in case of emergencies, and a new community cafe in Ballston that supports unhoused residents. And this, the recipient list and associated project descriptions are available online on this item's board report, if you want to look at that. And that again is item 32, a lot of very interesting, small projects that are doing a lot to help folks who are food insecure in our community. Item 39, this one, we acquired a property, 4030 16th Street South, and that is to enlarge Douglas Park. So, we've approved an agreement of sale to offer to purchase this property and it shares a boundary line with Monroe Park in the Douglas Park area. If it's acquired, this 10,888 square foot parcel, it will allow for a uniform expansion because it aligns with the whole park. If you look at the park, there's like a dent in it where the house is now. We buy, if we can purchase this house, which we've authorized doing, and if that sale goes through, it will help provide space that can also help limit the impact on trees due to scheduled playground renovations we've got coming. And it will allow additional opportunities for casual use space and circulation. So, people do, are always asking us for more parkland and this is part of how we do that. And it aligns with, I would say, action with our Public Spaces Master Plan. I have talked to people about, we don't just buy any old house, we buy houses that are in our plan and they align and help improve the parks and the spaces that we've got already. Also, finally, finishing up my comments here, we had several requests to advertise and that, that's just simply we're authorizing the advertisement for future public hearings on four items. Item 41 is regarding Article 7, Section 7.16, the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance. This will be heard by the Planning Commission, no earlier than October 7, and the County Board no earlier than October 19. And it will amend, would amend the zoning ordinance to effectuate the envisioned form of development outlined in the Crystal City Sector Plan for a discrete sub-area on the western edge, which is shown on the general land use plan. So, it's sort of a technical item. Item 42, and this is regarding Article 16, Section 16.2 of the Arlington County Zoning Ordinance, which will be heard by the Planning Commission, no earlier than October 7 also. And it will be heard by the County Board no earlier than October 19, our next monthly meeting. And it would allow for greater zoning flexibility for non-conforming townhouses and multifamily properties and alleviate the burden for property owners who are pursuing Board of Zoning Appeals approval for certain interior home improvement projects in Fairlington and other parts of the county where non-conforming townhouses and multifamily properties are present. That is a long way of saying that we've got some really clunky rules in our zoning that haven't made any sense and we're going to make it make more sense, but we have to do this in a legal way. So, we're advertising it and we'll be discussing it, I think, at our October 19 meeting and I expect it to go through because I think it just makes common sense. Item 43, this is part of the county's Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative, and that's removing regulatory barriers to, to commercial development. It's a two-part item. With this request to advertise, the first part of it is to advertise the adoption of a new proposed County Board policy for adaptive reuse of obsolete commercial buildings to another use to transform our office inventory. In other words, we've got a lot of office buildings, people aren't going into the office, we need to be using them for something else, and this is to help make it so that they could be used for something else and don't have to stay empty. have to stay empty. The second is potential proposed changes to amend the zoning ordinance, possible changes to administrative regulations to create a new streamlined process for, again, this adaptive reuse of commercial buildings with existing site plans. And this is just part of, I think, we're all hearing about after the pandemic, all of the virtual work that's going on, office buildings are emptying out, people don't need that office space, but boy, people need places to live, we have commercial needs, and this is to make us easy to make those, easier to make those changes. And that's just being advertised, and will be heard probably next month. Item 44 is regarding Chapter 57 of the Arlington County Code, which will be heard at our October 19 meeting. This would repeal Chapter 57, which is an erosion and sediment control of the county code, and amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 60, which is our stormwater management. And we will be looking at that next month. Legally, we have to advertise this, you'll be hearing a lot more about it when we come to the, to the meeting next month. Finally, Ms. Cunningham, as you brought up, we actually voted to do it, to defer a couple of items. So it doesn't, we didn't approve them, we didn't disapprove them, it just means that we're going to move consideration to another board meeting. Those items were, item 15 was, is regarding the Sixth Amendment to the License Agreement between the county board and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And this is Department of General Services for Premises located in the Sequoia Plaza Office Complex, where we sit today, at 2100 Washington Boulevard. And that will be considered next month. Item 45 is regarding a proposed zoning amendment that would define recovery residences as a residential use, allowing by right for eight or fewer residents in one-family detached dwellings and is subject to use permit approval for more than eight residents or other, and/or in other dwelling types. We've had a lot of conversation about that. I expect there will be some changes to what's been proposed. That item will be considered by the Planning Commission October 7, and then by the board back here on October 19. And we've been holding a lot of conversations with residents about that. Finally, gets me to item 16, which we did, which is the criminal, Community Criminal Justice Board Resolution. We approved this, that board is called the CCJB, again, Community Criminal Justice Board. And my colleague, Mr. DiFranti, has been working a lot with that. He is the current chair of the CCJB. And I finally get a chance to stop talking and can turn it over to Mr. DiFranti to speak about this item, if you are able to do that, Mr. DiFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, happy to. The county board approves item 16, it's a, it reestablishes the Community Criminal Justice Board. We've had it, but we are updating and revitalizing it. And it provides, what we passed provides some updates regarding its membership composition, administration records, custody and transparency, and strategic planning. This is an effort to really energize our work on criminal justice. It is required by state statute. The, the state allows localities to some flexibility to develop and, and operationalize pretrial services and community-based probation services. So pretrial services have taken on a much more important role over the last five, seven, ten, seven years or so, I would say. They allow us to refer to programs that support, refer individuals to programs that support diversion from incarceration, provide monitoring, support and resources for criminal defendants and their families when they navigate the criminal justice system. The sheriff's office provides these services through its pretrial program, and we want to do some looking at that to see how we can best serve, keep our communities safest, and do so in ways that are data-informed and thoughtful. Community-based probation services, also part of this work, refer to programs that provide the judicial system with sentencing alternatives. Read, community service, home incarceration and monitoring, and substance abuse treatment for misdemeanors and nonviolent felonies. I think it's important to be very clear there. The Department of Human Services and the Sheriff's Office jointly provide those services through the Community Corrections Program. And this updated Community Criminal Justice Board will take a look at that, provide attention both with the professionals as well as, I'll sit in as chair and try to keep the board updated. It exists in various forms across the country, these Community Criminal Justice Boards. DC has about 20 staff that work in this. Most of Northern Virginia has fewer, but we're trying to right-size it and energize it for Arlington. In Virginia as a whole, Community Criminal Justice Boards are especially focused on pretrial and community-based probation services. So the last resolution was adopted on this in 2001, it's 2024, it's time to update it. And there are best practices that we've learned. What big picture it does, just brief, establishes the clerk of the board, or their designated as the custodian for the records. I want to send a particular thank you to Graham Weinchenk, who is my aide and has served the, served as the lead on this. He's done a ton of work, and really wouldn't be possible to move it forward at this stage, it might have taken more months. We didn't want to do that without his great work. We've updated the composition of the, this board to include the Chief Public Defender, the Director of Arlington's Pretrial Program, the Director of Public Health, the Independent Police Auditor, and the Director of Arlington Addiction Recovery Initiative. So that's, these are a fair number of steps that we've done. There's some others that we've done as well, mindful to be at least decently brief. The creation of committees is also something envisioned by this resolution, election of a vice chair, which I think is very important, so that it's, this is jointly brought forward and publishing a strategic plan. Arlington shares pretrial community-based services with the City of Falls Church, so they're involved. They're included in the membership, and two of them, the police chief, as well as their deputy mayor, came to a September 5 meeting where Judge Wheat and our Commonwealth's attorney and others engaged. It was quite a strong meeting. So thanks for the chance to speak on this. I do think it's most appropriate for it to be consent because I don't think there's disagreement on it, but I do think it's a very important step. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. DiFranti, and thank you again for your, for your work on this. I think it is an important step, and I know Mr. Weinchenk has been helping a lot too. So a lot of good work done here. Thank you.
Yes, may I speak to that one briefly?
Ms. Cunningham, please, yes.
First of all, I want to say a huge thank you to Mr. DiFranti and Mr. Weinchenk for their leadership here. I think there's a lot of interest in our community in, in really getting this right. So I appreciate the care in the re-energizing of this board. I just do want to elevate, it is a large board because of all the, the needed folks there. I think it's at 31 or so. And there are community members who'd be thrilled to be participating in it. So as you think about the subcommittees, you know, inviting others, other community members in would be a great thing to do. I'm not sure more than 31 official members makes sense, but, but in the subcommittees, there's definitely interest in the community to have more participation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Any other comments? All right, I think we're ready to move to our regular agenda.
Just the gratitude for all the work.
No, 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 no. Yes, absolutely. Thanks again, because it's really has been an awful lot of work, so, and important work. Really pleased to have this board up and kind of running and strengthened to move on. All right, I think we're ready to move to our regular agenda. And Mr. Kushner, would you please call the first regular agenda item?
Yes, if you give me just a moment.
I will.
Please bear with me, this is a fairly long one. Item numbers 47A through C all concern the National Science Teachers Association Site Plan Amendments, Vacations, and Encroachments. 47A specifically is the Site Plan Amendment for the construction of up to 187 residential dwelling units and up to 11,948 square feet of commercial retail with modification to zoning ordinance requirements, including additional density, residential and retail parking ratios, density exclusions, and other modifications necessary to achieve the proposed development located, excuse me, located at 1840 Wilson Boulevard.
Oh.
Pardon me. Items number B and C, I believe we can do this slightly more abbreviated, are ordinances of vacations, of public easements, and Part C is the adoption of encroachment ordinances associated with the site plan. So this is again, item number 47A through C.
Thank you very much. I think with that, I will turn it over, Mr. Schwartz, to you. I imagine we have a staff presentation.
We do, Madam Chair. This morning, we have Courtney Badger with us, and I'm going to turn it over to her for the presentation. And she has Betsy Herps, and Sergio Veracocchia is also here. So I'm gonna, and I think Alex McMillan's available virtually. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Ms. Badger. Go ahead, go right ahead.
All right. Ms. Badger, good morning.
Good morning, board members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, actually, we can, we can. We can't see you great. We're thinking we need to change the tables a little bit, but we can hear you just fine.
Okay, good. So, good morning again. I'm Courtney Badger with the county's Planning Division, and I'll be giving the presentation on behalf of staff for the NSTA project. The NST items before you this morning consist of a Site Plan Amendment to Site Plan Number 382, three related vacation actions, and two related encroachments. The site that we're talking about is located at 1840 Wilson Boulevard. It's between Wilson and Clarendon Boulevard, just to the west of Road Street. Currently, the site is occupied by the office building for the National Science Teaching Association, Roadside Grill, and Iwerdekeo Restaurant. The site plan was originally approved in 2005 by the county board, and it consists of demoing the restaurant pads and constructing an additional six-story office building on the block. That site plan governs the site today and is valid through 2025. If this Site Plan Amendment were to be approved, that would supersede the 2005 approval. With the 2005 approval, the general land use plan designation and zoning were changed. The applicant is not proposing any further changes to that today. The GLUP designation is medium office apartment hotel, and the zoning is CO2.5 mixed-use district. As a part of the Site Plan Amendment, the applicant is proposing to redevelop the entire site and construct a new seven-story mixed-use building containing 187 residential units and approximately 12,000 square feet of ground-floor retail. The applicant will be utilizing the existing underground parking garage containing 110 parking spaces to support this project. There'll be a residential parking ratio of .5 spaces per unit and a retail parking ratio of one space per 747 square feet retail GFA. With this proposal, they are requesting zoning ordinance modifications for reduction of required parking, additional density and density exclusions. These are typically modifications that we see with requested site plan projects. The site is within the Roseland to Courthouse urban design study. And just in case there's community listening, we've referred to this plan as the ARCUDs, or the ROCO, or the in-between study. It's all the same document. For consistency in this presentation, I'm going to call it ARCUDs. This is a primarily urban design document that was adopted by the board in 2003 to help guide development in the area between Roseland and Courthouse. Looking at how this corridor, looking at this corridor in context, you can see how the development guided by the ARCUDs document has shaped in this in-between area over the past two decades. So just to orient you a little bit, the corridor here is outlined in yellow, and the NSTA site that we're discussing is, is in red. This, as a reminder, the corridor is designated on the GLUP as medium office apartment hotel. And the ARCUDs design study divides the corridor into specific development sites, all but two of which have been developed according to the plan guidance. The NSTA site and, that we're discussing and the Exxon site right across the street are the last two sites to develop. On the west side of the corridor, you can see closer to Courthouse is the Wendy's site that's currently under construction. There's the 2100, or 2001 Clarendon Apartment Building, 1919, and then 1701 Wilson, which have all been redeveloped. North of the corridor, just to further put it in context, is a GLUP low-medium designation area, that's Colonial Village. And then south of the corridor is the medium resident, doesn't, medium residential GLUP designated area. So the ARCUDs has site-specific recommendations for the NSTA site. It calls for ground-floor retail and either office or residential above. Additionally, there's a series of urban design recommendations such as eliminating curb cuts, expanding sidewalks, using brick, having pedestrian-friendly facades, maximizing the number of on-street parking spaces, et cetera, all of which the applicant is doing with this project. The ARCUDs contemplates a tapering scheme for the heights in this area, with the taller buildings on the eastern and western ends of the corridor tapering down to lower ends in the middle. A five-story height is recommended in the heights plan. However, the play, the plan also calls for this to be studied on a site-by-site basis and for flexibility to be provided, especially when community benefits like affordable housing are being provided. So you can see in the top image the ARCUDs height plan tapering scheme, and then on the bottom is the applicant's proposed seven-story building in context, their building being where I'm circling. In addition to the ARCUDs guidance on the flexibility in heights, it also has design recommendations to encourage appropriate dialogue between new buildings and then existing residential buildings on either side of Wilson and Clarendon. Staff believes that the techniques that the applicant is utilizing meets the intent and guidance, and effectively breaks up the massing and size of the building. So first, there's a step back at the second floor that creates a pedestrian feel and provides relief. There's also horizontal banding elements above the ground floor to help create a pedestrian scale. On both the north and the south facades, there's a courtyard terrace on the second floor of the building that breaks up the long facade. They're using light-colored brick and vertical elements to provide that vertical separation that's called for. And then the top floor is recessed to try to make it look and feel more like a six-story building. These design elements are carried over to Clarendon Boulevard facade and North Road Street facade as well. On Clarendon, they're also introducing some green wall elements along the residential area. And then additionally, on the Road Street facade, they are proposing a curve on Wilson and Rhodes as a tribute, an interpretation of the roadside grill building that's listed as notable in the county's historic resource inventory. The county's HRI does not call for the building or the facade to be preserved, but the applicant worked with our historic preservation staff to provide this rounded corner and to include some glass block as tribute to the roadside building facade. Looking at the proposed site design, as mentioned previously, the applicant is proposing to maintain the existing below-grade parking garage with the existing alley and parking ramp. So all of the back-of-house uses, trash and loading will be off of this private alley. There'll be a retail fronting on Road Street that wraps around to Wilson and Clarendon with entrances on all three sides, a residential amenity and lobby space on Wilson Boulevard, and then four loft residential units with stoops on Clarendon Boulevard. With this development, the site will have improved streetscape. On the top in right images, you can see an example of what Road Street looks like today. There's a narrow sidewalk against brick wall with little, with no activity, no trees or plantings. And the bottom image shows a rendering of proposed Road Street, transparency to create activity, street trees, widened sidewalk, and buffered bike lane, et cetera. The existing conditions for the site contain six street trees, an inconsistent streetscape that varies from five feet to 16 feet, a surface parking lot with two curb cuts in the middle of the block. And the proposed conditions will remove those curb cuts, create a consistent 16-foot, 8-inch streetscape on the three sides, with 19 street trees and a minimum of 8-foot clear sidewalk, all of which furthers the goals in the urban design study, the MTP, and the Roseland to Ballston streetscape standards. In addition to the approved streetscape, this project will also be providing underground utilities, adding bike facilities on Road Street in the form of a buffered bike lane and a protected bike lane. They'll be making the base affordable housing contribution, public art contribution, and installing the in-building wireless first responders network. All of these things are being done to mitigate the impact of the project, not in exchange for community benefits. The community benefits that are being provided in exchange for additional density include providing 10 onsite CAF units. And the breakdown of these units is four one-bedroom units, three two-bedrooms, and three three-bedroom units. This serves to further the goals of the Affordable Housing Master Plan. They'll also be providing over $35,000 to support county-initiated off-site transportation improvements in the Roseland to Courthouse area, and participating in the Green Building Incentive Program at the .35 FAR level, so achieving LEED gold and other sustainability initiatives for, furthering the county's community energy plan. The site plan went through the standard SPRC process with an online engagement, a walking tour, and two SPRC meetings. It was heard and approved unanimously at Transportation Commission, Planning Commission, and Housing Commission. There are a handful of vacations and encroachments associated with this. The vacations are currently being used mostly as sidewalks with some grassy areas behind the sidewalk. There are two encroachments being requested for an underground transformer vault and a stormwater detention vault. You can see the easement shown here on the slide. They're along Wilson and Clarendon Boulevard. You can see in the red hashed area on the right image here. And then the requested encroachments are along Clarendon. Staff supports the applicant's proposal as it would substantially improve the site over the existing conditions, and it advances several county goals, including but not limited to affordable housing, the inclusion of 10 onsite units, including six family-sized units in the metro corridor, furthers multiple goals of the Affordable Housing Master Plan. The participation in the Green Building Incentive Program furthers goals of the community energy plan. Creating new housing supply in a transit-rich area supports the GLUP development goals, development and growth goals. And the, the urban design principles that are enacted further the ARCUDs study in, in redeveloping the last pieces of the puzzle for that corridor. And the improved streetscape and constructing new ADA ramps, crosswalks, and installing new bike facilities improves the streetscape. Therefore, staff recommends that you adopt the Site Plan Amendment and enact the associated vacations and encroachments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I think that takes us, I assume the applicant...
And I think that takes us, I assume the applicant has a presentation?
We do, Madam Chair. If I may pull it up here.
Yeah, that's fine.
And for some reason, I'm having difficulty doing that right now. I might have to rejoin teams. I apologize.
It's okay. We're all adjusting here a little bit today.
Let's see where it is. Of course, it's the one thing. All right. Hopefully, this comes up. All right, I think we got it. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair and Board members. My name is Andrew Painter with the Law Firm of Walsh-Kalucci, speaking today on behalf of the applicant, Fortis Companies. Joining me on my right, Steve Smith with Cooper Carey. They are a project architect. We're missing Alicia Buck, who would have been here as well. She had a family emergency, and our thoughts are with her. We have Brian Eskew, who is the Vice President with Fortis. We have Lauren Riley with Walsh-Kalucci, Mike Workowski, who is with Walsh &amp; Associates, our traffic consultant, and Jeff Kreps with VICA. They are civil engineer and landscape consultants as well. This proposal, as Steph said, seeks to take a major step forward in the realization of long-envisioned plan policies for the site. Before I go into some of the details, I'd like to turn it over to Brian just to say a couple of words from Fortis's perspective. They are a relatively new entrant into the Arlington market. They're excited to be here. So Brian?
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Andrew. My name is Brian Eskew. I'm a Vice President with the Fortis Companies. And before we jump into the presentation, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board, thank staff, the various commissions, and the community for their time and input in this process. I think we've really improved the project through the process. And, you know, one more thing before Andrew gets in, I did want to compliment staff on, you know, a smooth and predictable process. We work in many municipalities around the metro area, and, you know, as we look for future projects and future areas to invest in, this is something that, you know, really differentiates Arlington. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Andrew, but just wanted to mention that briefly before we begin.
Thank you. That's music to our ears.
Something I'll highlight in my notes as well. Thank you very much, Brian. I want to start off with, and I don't know if we can go back to the slide deck. I don't know if we're still sharing it or not.
I think we can make that happen. It might just take a bit.
All right. Hopefully, that shows up. I might have to try one more time. I'm not sure what the holdup is. I apologize.
It's okay.
I don't even know. Maybe it knocked me off of Teams.
You might have to go back in again. I don't know.
If not, I'm going to roll through.
Mr. Kushner might be able to help you, and if you maybe want to, if you decide you want to get started while we try to figure that out, it's okay too, whatever you want to handle it.
Yeah, it's moving. I don't know. Oh, it's showing up?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not.
Were you in the meeting?
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me.
Can you pull up Teams? Can you share your screen?
Yeah. Let's try it again. The whole thing is freezing up now. Let's see what happens here. You think that everything's going well.
No idea what you want to send with the slide deck.
Yeah, it's a big slide deck, but let's see. All right, let's try that again. And let's bring this up. Stuff there. All right, we're going with what we got here. Come on.
Did you share a window screen?
Yeah. All right.
Do you have the deck? Which one of these is?
Yeah, this is not what I want to have happen right now.
Which one of those is the deck? I think I can do that for you.
It's that one right here. But I'm going to end that too, just end all of that, and then bring it back up. Yeah, the, let me see real quick.
Is it true that?
No, I don't have it on the, just try to bring it up one more time. Okay. Let's try to share the screen. Okay. All right. We're going. Okay. All right. I'm not touching anything.
There we go. You know, a picture's worth a thousand words at least, and this will really save time no matter what delay.
It will.
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your indulgence. I want to start on this screen, and I'm not going to touch anything. I'm not going to do share view or anything.
Bye.
But I want to start with this. Ms. Badger had a similar image, but this shows the proposed building in yellow, and you can see it's equidistant between the Roslin neighborhood to the east on the right-hand side of the screen and the Courthouse neighborhood to the west on the left-hand side of the screen. This really is kind of a physical meeting point between those two neighborhoods. That is something that the Roslin to Boston corridor, excuse me, Roslin to Courthouse corridor urban design study envisions. And so I just wanted to sort of highlight that, you know, we've been doing the Bullseye Corridor planning in this county for a number of decades. It's been very successful. Now, we're kind of filling in the pieces. And as Ms. Badger says, these are the last two pieces, this site and the Exxon site on the other side of North Road Street. This was subject to a previous Board approval in 2005 for new headquarters for the National Science Teaching Association. They were going to retain the existing building and then add a new five-story building where the Roadside Grill and Il Riddicchio Restaurants are. And as I think we all know, you know, NSTA's office needs have decreased. That's been a national trend, as Madam Chair you spoke about earlier today. And Fortis purchased the property in late 2022, and we immediately began working on sort of a new vision for it. We talked with members of planning staff. We spoke with other community individuals and our design team. And we came up with four design drivers that have really sort of been the push for this whole project. One of them is to redress the deficiency of housing in this section of the county. Second is to complete out the urban design intent of the county's various land use policies. Third is to deliver the retail and restaurant opportunities that were envisioned with the original approval. And last but not least is to create a physical and social meeting place between the Courthouse and Roslin neighborhoods. So this is the bookend of, the eastern bookend of the Courthouse neighborhood. On the other side, immediately start feeling like you are heading into Roslin. So this is a meeting place. What is being proposed is a new seven-story building with 187 residential units and just shy of 12,000 square feet of ground floor retail. We are requesting bonus density at the .35 level under the county's green building incentive policy, so this will be a LEED gold building. How the building stacks up, this is an exxonometric diagram. You can see the three levels of below-grade parking that we are preserving with this building. So that has a tremendous environmental benefit from an embedded carbon perspective. On top of that, you can see in red the ground plane, sort of the ground plane use along North Road Street. You'll see the retail opportunities that we have that then go around the corner on Wilson and Clarendon Boulevard. On Wilson Boulevard, we also have our residential lobby. And then on Clarendon Boulevard, and my hat's off to the architect on this, we have a series of four loft or liner units that will have stoops that directly front on the Clarendon Boulevard. So that's a design cue that we've taken from the 1919 building that's immediately to the west that have those direct access stoops, and we're kind of carrying that language through. And then on top of that will be six floors of housing. This is a plan view of the proposed use. You can see the sidewalk improvements, the street trees. We do exceed the tree canopy goals and the tree replacement requirements. And then on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the alleyway that we are preserving that not only provides sort of a mid-block crossing in the workhorse of both this building and the 1919 building to the west, but it'll also provide a pedestrian cut-through that is safe, that will be separated from vehicles by existing columns as well. Just to talk real quick about the architecture, our design philosophy from the beginning has been anchored in two ways. Number one was to have compliance with the recommendations of the urban design study in terms of height, building, step backs, that sort of thing. And the second was to have quality facade materials and a design that echo elements of both Colonial Village and Roadside Grill. So I'd like to sort of walk through some of the architectural slides here. This one is looking due west on Wilson Boulevard, as though you're heading from Roslin up to Courthouse, and you can see the building. And you can see sort of the round curve architectural nod that we did to emulate the Roadside Grill building. And so this kind of gives the building sort of a streamlined, modern kind of look. It's kind of funky and kind of neat. This is a little bit closer up, right at the intersection of Wilson and North Road Street. Want to highlight here two things. One is that indentation at the second level, which has sort of, you know, calls for an architectural dialogue with the Colonial Village apartments across the street. And then something you can't see here, but another architectural nod to Roadside Grill. If you ever go into Roadside, there are these glass blocks when you enter. So we've put them on sort of the columns coming down, and they don't show up here, but we will have those in our final design. This is a view of the building as though you were sitting or standing at Colonial Village, looking due across Wilson Boulevard. And you can sort of see right below those shade structures where we have our elevators with a lot of glass. We want to have visual porosity between interior and exterior spaces. And this is looking from the northwest, looking through the alley and looking down Wilson Boulevard. And then we'll flip over to the Clarendon Boulevard side, and this is from the southeast, or excuse me, southwest, looking at the building. You can see the alley on the left-hand side of the screen. And then if you were at the Bromptons Townhouse Project, looking directly across the street, you can see those liner units on the left-hand side. We also incorporated green screen walls as well. That's part of our biophilic narrative. And then you can see the start of the retail, you know, experience and restaurant experience on the right-hand side of the screen, which will wrap around North Roads. And then this is looking up Clarendon Boulevard, as though, again, you were looking up towards Courthouse. And you can see the Exxon station on the right-hand side of the screen. And we kind of ghosted in, it doesn't show up that well here, but we did sort of ghost in a building overlay of what could be if that site one day redevelops, and be very complimentary to what we are proposing here. In terms of housing affordability, as Ms. Badger mentioned, it featured very prominently into our overall building program. We are satisfying the tendency, the Affordable Housing Master Plan. There are three levels of affordable housing. One, as Ms. Badger mentioned, is the base affordable housing contribution. Second, there is affordable housing associated with the bonus density. And then third, when NSTA was originally approved, the county wanted to retain a nonprofit organization and office space in the county. And so it did not assess an up GLUP contribution when they changed the GLUP for that office building. So we are now paying that, and we're happy to do so. But also, as Ms. Badger mentioned, we have three three-bedroom units and three two-bedroom units. So the idea here is to get at the idea of accessibility for families, and we appreciate Mr. McMillan's help on that. Not going to spend too much time from a building sustainability perspective. Again, LEED gold, .35 FAR level with the green building incentive policy. This will be an all-electric building except for the backup generator. And then from a transportation perspective, sidewalk upgrades around the site, removal of two existing driveways, and again, we are maintaining the alley again as the workhorse of this building and the one to the west. And then towards the end of the presentation, Madam Chair, these are the community benefits that Ms. Badger mentioned. I would just say that we have made substantial changes over the past year, even before we filed the application. We filed what's known as the conceptual site plan to tease out some of the planning and, you know, zoning issues. That influenced what we ultimately submitted with our 4.1, and we really appreciate staff's work on that. Some shout-outs to Chris Kreider, Laura Schaub, Matt Pfeifer, Aaron Schreiber. Everyone on staff has really been good to work with. It is a very smooth process, a very straightforward application, a clean staff report. And I think at the end of the day, we've achieved a good balance, and I appreciate your time and consideration. So our entire team is here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
That's great. Thank you. We probably will have some questions, but I think next we go to our advisory groups. I think we have some of our advisory groups with us here.
We do. I believe we have, sorry, pardon me, Ms. Karen Guevara with Planning, who is here in person, and Ms. Anika Montgomery, joining us from Housing Online.
Okay. Ms. Guevara, why don't we start with you because you're here? And then Ms. Montgomery, we'll go to you online.
Okay.
Try again. I think it's a button.
The button on the microphone.
There's a button on the microphone, maybe, at the base of it?
It keeps on.
You got it, and now it's on.
Okay, great. Good morning, esteemed county board members. The commission heard this on September 4th, and first of all, I would like to commend both staff and the applicant for working together lovely and collaboratively with the community and really working hard to address their concerns from the first SPRC that we had, where there was a little bit of community anxiety about the building heights, to, you know, to the last one when it came before us. Actually, one of the persons who was really not happy with the heights ended up coming to speak and say really lovely things about the project and how he excited he was for having affordable units being provided on-site. So some of the topics of discussions that we had were about this streetscape and landscaping. We had a speaker who noted that the landscaping didn't have, contained invasive species and non-native species as well, and so, but the applicant assured us that in the final landscape plan, they're going to make sure that everything is in accordance to county requirements. Affordable housing, again, we were all very pleased to see that 10 onsite affordable units are being made available, particularly that the three-bedroom units are there. And if I remember correctly, there are seven, and out of those seven, there are three of them are designated for, as affordable units. One of the things that we did note is that we would, that the units are at 60% AMI, and it would be great to see a little bit more diversity on, when it comes to the affordability levels. The other thing, as I mentioned, was the building height. The community at first wanted six stories instead of seven, but at the end, they came around. And from our perspective, we think it's appropriate and in line with the Roslin to Courthouse Urban Design Study.
Thank you. All right. Don't go too far away. We may have some questions for you too. Thank you. All right. Next, Ms. Montgomery.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good morning to all of the county board members. At our September 5th meeting, the Housing Commission considered the NSTA site plan, and we overwhelmingly supported the project. The commission voted 12 to 0 to support the staff recommendation and to approve the site plan. In addition to the affordable housing ordinance contribution, the project adds 10 committed affordable units CAF to the county's affordable housing supply, which is good. This includes six family-sized units, including three-bedroom units. The development will also add one type A accessible CAF, which was also discussed thoroughly by one of our commissioners. The commission also discussed a desire to have a taller building height at the site and a greater density height throughout the Roslin-Boston corridor. The commission also discussed the amount of onsite parking and the overwhelming unit composition of the project and urged the developer to include as many family-sized units as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think that concludes our commissions.
It does.
Okay, and I believe we have some public speakers perhaps.
We do indeed. Give me just a moment.
Yep.
All right. Our first public speaker, speaking for three minutes, is Mr. Bernard Byrne, followed by our five-minute speaker, Leslie Arminski, representing Renner Fort Meyer Heights Civic Association. Mr. Byrne?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Please do not approve this site plan amendment unless the applicant agrees to revise it. The building's footprint is too large. There is little or no open space next to the building for plantings that will support pollinators. The applicant stated landscaping will be in accordance with county requirements. However, these requirements are minimal and don't really cover the biophilic elements and things like that. The project will not be biophilic. The building needs a green roof or plantings near or beneath solar panels. Flowering vines should hang down from the roof and terraces and climb from the ground on trellises. We're not seeing this in the county, and this is an example. The applicant's preliminary plant list has many deficiencies. One plant seed is Specter Billy, is native only to China and Korea. Four others are Father of Gilla, open hydrangea, purple comb flower, and a species of golden rod are natives of the U.S., but are not native to Northern Virginia and its vicinity. All of these may become invasive. Some may not feed native pollinators, and except for that very first one, the county's policy does not prohibit these things. Six plants are wind-pollinated ornamental grasses. These do not produce nectar, which feed butterflies, moths, hummingbirds, and flies, are pollinate plants. Grasses cannot feed them. Four others, Dwarfara, Father Regilla, open hydrangea, purple comb flower, and a species of goldenrod are natives of the U.S., but are not native to Northern Virginia and its vicinity. All of these may become invasive. Some may not feed native pollinators. And except for that very first one, the county's policy does not prohibit these things. Six plants are wind-pollinated ornamental grasses. These do not produce nectar, which feed butterflies, moths, hummingbirds, and flies, are pollinate plants. Grasses cannot feed them. To the applicant's credit, the list contains common milkweed. This is one of the most important plants for feeding monarch butterflies in the eastern and midwestern United States. However, ornamental grasses will comprise about 43% of the total number of herbaceous plants. That percentage is much higher than the 25% limit that the U.S. Department of Agriculture publication recommends. Decrease the number and percentage of grasses, and that's a big thing. Many plants are cultivars. However, most cultivars attract people, not pollinators. Some are sterile. Pollinators can't feed on the nectar and pollen of others. Therefore, replace all cultivars unless they are more disease-resistant, more resistant to disease than their parents. The plant list contains Valley Forge, American elm. This cultivar has some resistance to Dutch elm disease. However, only 60%, 7% survive for 10 years in the National Elm Trial, which ended in 2015. In contrast, 86% of the New Harmony cultivar and 82% of the Princeton cultivars survive that long. Investigators therefore preferred them. Therefore, replace Valley Forge with New Harmony or Princeton. The applicant's landscape architect stated at the planning commission meeting that he agreed with my comments. However, the plant list remains unchanged. Please therefore vote to require the applicant to revise the plant list in the final landscape plan that will submit to the county if you approve this project. The applicant said something about this, but we really hit something with board that puts it right in that they will revise it, especially to get rid of, because remember, those, those plants are not native to Arlington area, are not, are not subject to review by the, they're on the county. They're not on any plant list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Our next speaker is Leslie Armansky. If you give me just a moment, to reset the timers. All right, Mr. Armansky. Leslie Armansky.
You might be muted and need to unmute. Do we see him in the queue?
Give me just a moment, I'll see if they're in the lobby.
That is the virtual lobby.
They are here with us virtually. Leslie Armansky here to speak on item number 47.
Please unmute yourself, either with the icon or star six. Hello? All right.
I'm not seeing any response. Madam Chair, I do have their contact information if you would like me to try and reach out.
Okay, why don't you do a quick reach out, but I don't want to wait too long.
Of course. Give me just a moment.
Yeah. And once we hear from Mr. Armansky, I'm going to turn, Mr. Karen Tonas, to you, I think, to make a motion, and then we'll have discussion, if that's okay with everybody. Okay. It's a long motion, I think.
Thanks to our county attorney, it is now rationalized to.
It's rationalized, that's good.
It's still longer.
Having any luck, Mr. Kushner?
No.
All right. I, okay.
All right. He's having technical difficulties. We're calling him in by phone.
Okay. All right. I can hear him. He's trying to unmute and not, not managing it. It couldn't possibly be the Teams app, I'm sure.
For software developers, would be an interesting feature to add.
Mr. Armansky, can you hear us?
Public meeting button. That does everything.
I'll call him back one more time and can move on.
All right.
Yes, hello, Mr. Armansky, can you hear us?
Yeah. I, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Goodness gracious, we can. Please go ahead.
I don't, I don't really understand. I tried to unmute and it didn't do anything, so.
Sometimes none of us understand. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So, good, good morning. Stuart Stein asked me to speak on behalf of the Radnor Fort Meyer Civic Association, since he could not attend the county board meeting today. The Roslin to Courthouse urban design study, also known as the in-between study, has been very important in the development of our community. This project, in many ways, is just the type of building that was envisioned by the plan and the planners that wrote it. We would prefer it was six stories, not seven, which would be more appropriate for the taper and the specifics of the plan. Otherwise, this project is very much in keeping with the spirit of the in-between study. Parking is always a concern of ours, and we think the ratio is too low, but we appreciate that it is not even lower. We also appreciate the retention of the current parking garage. We are very happy to see affordable units being provided on-site. This is something that we always ask for and greatly appreciate. Many residents in our community have expressed their desire for the roadside grill and Il Ridicchio to find homes in the new building. They are not only extraordinarily popular in our community, but also with many Arlington County residents from other areas. We have been told that there were discussions with one and plans to reach out to the other restaurant. We hope these discussions lead to both restaurants remaining in our community. Now personally, I always have had issues with, with the four and 15% percentages on, on the electrification of the, for electric chargers. And I'm, I'm wondering why there was no C2E2 commission or input into the process, but we, we all know what they would have said, they like 50%. Well, anyway, I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Thank you for your persistence, and thank you for speaking for C2E2. I hope they appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Armansky. I think that's our last commission.
That is correct.
All right. Can we move to public speakers? I believe we have, do we have?
Those were our public speakers. There are no further speakers on this item.
Okay. All right. Good. Colleagues, I think to get us started, Mr. Karen Tonas, why don't you give us a motion, and then we'll have discussion, questions, et cetera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the county board adopt the county manager's recommendations for items 47A, 47B, and 47C, as reflected in the board reports for the meeting of September 14th today, 2024, namely two. First, adopt the site plan amendment ordinance for site plan number 382, as shown in the attachment to the 47A board report, to permit construction of up to 187 residential dwelling units and up to 11,948 square feet of commercial retail. And, second, enact the ordinances of vacations attached to the 47B board report to vacate a portion of an easement for public street and utility purposes at 1805 Clarendon Boulevard, and to vacate two portions of an easement for public sidewalk and utility purposes at 1805 Clarendon Boulevard, and 1840 Wilson Boulevard, and to vacate a portion of an easement for public street and utility purposes at 1840 Wilson Boulevard. And, third, enact the ordinances to permit encroachment attached to the 47C board report to permit encroachment into existing easements at 1840 Wilson Boulevard and at 1805 Clarendon Boulevard. That concludes the language of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. Mr. Karen Tonas, do you, would you like to start us off with any comments, questions on your motion? You're welcome to do that, or I can move on?
Three things, and then we can go over to discussion and closing comments. I, I am really pleased to, to offer this motion, first and foremost, because of the urbanism of the, of the, of the project. It fills the gap between Pearson Courthouse. There was some discussion here about the original vision. It delivers a significant corner architecture. Thank you for this. I have to say that because we expect it from a lot of other applicants, and it never comes so, so well-defined. It rhymes with a series of relatively recent developments in the same sector, and it significantly proves the urban realm. It delivers a lot of new transit-served housing and street retail, as well as a number of quite successful public spaces. I think that the original plan and vision is coming well-together, and we're getting higher-quality buildings, and this is a testament to how planning actually eventually works. I said something about the architecture. Actually, I appreciate both materials. Also, the minor detail of balconies that you, you have embedded in the facade quite successfully. Transportation, this is transit-oriented development. Also, I approve that the street height on Wilson and Clarendon, they're both reduced to two lanes, it's about 10 feet, actually works and is not an obstacle to, to development of the corridor. More than one-bedroom units, you have heard it already from, from, in the testimony, this, this, this building will house families and a lot of affordable housing on-site. We will talk about that later. Lead goal, an all-electric building, it is possible, as you see, including the commercial part of the building. And all of, all over, it's a, it's a well-designed building. Thank you for, for bringing that to us.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions? Ms. Cunningham?
Do you want to just do all the, you don't, you don't want to group in or anything like that?
I don't, I'm not going to group. I don't think so. I mean, I could, if we start. What I'm going to do is you, you bring up a group, and I'll see if anybody else has anything on that area.
Sounds good. Let's see. I think we heard from Housing Commission about the question of 60% AMI versus lower. And I know this is a sort of staff negotiation, as well as a, as a owner question, but I wonder if staff could comment on the possibility of getting one or two of these to 30% or 50%.
Yeah, so we have Alex McMillan from our Housing Department on the line, who I think could answer that.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, board members. So, yes, there is a negotiation done for these bonus units, and most of the units that we try to acquire are at 60% AMI. So the Housing Division conducts a needs analysis to quantify current and future housing needs every five years. That analysis does really show the need at 60 and below, as well as a need at 30 and below. So we do try to get the 16% AMI units. So asking the applicant for 30% AMI units does create a trade-off. We will get a whole lot less units if we do that. So, you know, there is a very big trade-off there. We would only get one, two, three units at 30% AMI, or 10 at 60. So it is a trade-off there. But in an effort to continue adding supply, we do stick with the 60% AMI for most of the site plans that we do, in order to get a, a number of units that makes sense for the, for the owner to manage, as well as makes sense for the county supply goals.
And we don't have high vacancy in any of those categories right now for one-bedroom 60% AMI, for instance. Everything's full.
Yes. For CAF vacancy, it's almost zero. Pretty much all of our CAF units are filled at all times, and we've seen that historically.
Great.
Could I do a follow-up question? Mr. McMillan, it's my understanding, so we have 60%, we get more units, and then if we need to help someone who only has 30%, we, we can buy that down with housing grants and things like that. That's, that's, that's our approach. So that's how we get to 30% for some people, and it's actually, I guess, cost-efficient, have more units that we can buy down by a little bit, rather than have fewer, fewer units that we don't buy down at all. Is that a reasonable?
That's, yes, that's correct. There's other avenues in which we can buy it down from 60 to 30, such as housing choice vouchers, housing grants, and, and those means, yes.
Yeah. So that, that's sort of why we do it. Go ahead, Ms. Coffey.
Kind of a, a related question on the affordability. One, thank you for the onsite and family-sized units. This is a huge express priority for our whole community, and so always, always great to see that. And thank you also for doing a type A accessible unit. I know that those are, you know, hard to come by, because it's a percentage of our percentage of affordable units. A question for staff that is not necessarily related to this process, but kind of comes, came into my mind, thinking about it. Do we ever have any assessment of kind of the intersection between our accessible units and our family-sized committed affordable units? Are most of the accessible units, we get one bedroom or, or larger? You know, I, I just can imagine, especially with how few accessible committed units, if we're really only getting one bedroom accessible, that doesn't serve a large portion of our population. So I'm just wondering if we know anything about that, perhaps a topic just for future discussion, but it's just something that came to my mind, thinking about these two things together.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if that's his answer. Good.
Yes, that is data that the Housing Division does track. I don't have it on hand right now, but that's something we can definitely follow up with the board on.
That works for me. Thank you.
And if I could go ahead and ask a follow-up question, probably for you, Mr. McMillan. So I actually don't really know what makes a unit accessible. Is it that difficult to make accessible? It's, maybe it's wider doors. I mean, sometimes I wonder if, you know, if you look at the universal design, it's a way of making units accessible to, like, anybody that doesn't have to be so specific, you know, that can be used by other people, other people who don't need accessibility, perhaps, or later on in their lives do. But maybe there's some very specific expensive things that make something accessible. So could you explain that a little bit? What's accessible? What makes it accessible?
Yes, that's another one that is not exactly in my area expertise, but I would be able to follow up with the Housing Division. I'm not sure if any of the planning staff has any more specifics there, but I'd be happy to work with our compliance staff to get an answer on the comprehensive list of what those differences are.
Okay, thank you. The applicant might know, because you designed it.
Steve, I'm Steve Smith with Cooper Carey. Yes, accessibility has a lot to do with everything from thresholds into rooms or the units, the heights, the slope of those, to the countertop heights that are in the units. That's at the kitchen, that's in the bathrooms. Knee space between those areas, so that you have recess from the countertop area, so you can pull right up to it, even a table area that you may be providing. Showers are also affected, so that you could roll right into the showers, have reach with microwaves, also, not in the showers, but microwaves, shower handles, as well as heads, those kind of things. So there's a lot of adaptation to, from.
Thank you. And I see Mr. Painter about to respond. Is it that expensive to do that? I can see the counters might not work for everybody, but some of that might work, you know, like the showers rolling in. I mean, people have that sometimes just anyway. So I'm just sort of wondering sometimes if we could be building more accessible units that could be adapted to being accessible easily, and make it a little easier to provide that kind of housing. But I don't know.
Relative to a lot of other costs, I'll, you know, I'm an architect, you want to talk to a contractor about this, but.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay. We'll, we'll go with you.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a heavy burden from a cost standpoint.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Painter?
And one thing that, just a, an idea for the future, when we were going through this, we've done this on all other 4.1 site plans, where we wanted to provide more type A units in our CAFs. The Virginia Uniform statewide building code, and this was, this is way above my, my head, but it requires equal distribution of the different classes of the types of units within the building. And so even if we wanted to provide additional type A units for CAFs, we are prohibited from doing so. We could be facing a lawsuit, the county could face a lawsuit. It's just a, it's a weird situation, but it would be good to go down to Richmond, and I mean, that was, that's just one little idea, to change that, at least for committed affordable units, to be able to provide additional type A units for, you know.
All right. Thank you. So, all right, colleagues, I'm not going to be here, but let's put a pin in another thing for our legislative package. Thank you, Mr. Painter. And then maybe back to the architect. It seems to me, listening to this, you could, there are a lot of designs, I mean, the things that you could do just any way that could easily be converted, you wouldn't even call them accessible, but, I mean, the state's not going to mind if you do, like, a roll-in shower. And that's probably one of the most expensive things to change, right? So that if you just put in more of those. So that if you just put in more of those, that's just how you designed your bathrooms, they might be more easily converted, yes.
Yes, that can be a little bit more of a challenge, because without a threshold and that curb that kind of holds the water in, you have to have some additional dimension to understand where the turning radiuses and so forth are, that are bigger within those units, takes up more space. You want to keep the water in, you don't want it to go all over the place. But also, as you can imagine, where the drains are, this is getting a little too technical probably, but a traditional shower pan has some dimension to it that allows for all that drainage to happen. Now you've got to sink in the structure and plan for that and get it right in the exact spot when you pour in the concrete, et cetera. So there's, there's some, in this case, we've got wood. You know, it's, most of the, most of the building's wood. So a lot of those things are also a challenge, when you've got dimensional lumber that always comes at a certain size, and what you have to do to make those, make those units more accessible, so.
Thank you, helpful. All right, well, something to sort of.
Not as simple as it may sound.
No, no, I get it, although sometimes.
A lot of details.
Once you've got something built, if you need to modify it, then it's really, really hard. So it might be something to think about, I don't know.
I'm 6'4", so I like a taller countertop, you know, when I'm working, not having to bend over.
Okay, I get it.
So you've got to think about market things as well.
Right, but you might have people in your household who aren't 6'4".
Yeah, I do.
Who might complain. Yeah, been there, done that. Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions? Matt, Mr Di Ferenti, there you are, yes.
Well, I just.
You just disappeared, here we are, okay.
I think Ms Cunningham may have had additional questions. I just have concluding comments, so.
Oh, okay, I'm going to go.
Leave it back to you guys.
Thank you, yep, I think we may have some more questions. Ms Cunningham, back to you.
Yep, so to wrap up on the housing question, could you give us an approximation of like a two bedroom that's accessible versus not accessible? How much more square footage do you need, roughly?
Or what's the cost?
I really don't think I can answer that. All I'm getting at is that, like the bathroom, the turning radiuses, which have just been increased in the code recently, from a five foot turning radius to five foot six, is a little bit bigger than you would have. You know, and the reason it's difficult is that we look at these buildings and as we start to create masses and respond to community engagement and conversations that are going on there, you end up with different situations that are happening inside. So we're trying to make these units to fit with concerns that others have about things like massing and so forth. So it's not like this cookie cutter that just moves along throughout the building. So it's a little different situation everywhere. And we're trying to distribute them around the building.
Great. One other housing question I had, we are always looking for ownership opportunities in the county, and I wonder, those townhouse kind of units, those are still rentals?
They are.
Okay. I had a transportation question, environmental question.
Uh huh. Are we ready to move to transportation? I think we are. All right, go ahead. I'm going to just let you do the buckets, go ahead.
Okay. Transportation next. We heard earlier, public comment about a bus stop very near here. Are there any changes in this project that are affecting bus or bike routes?
Nothing, I defer to Mike Warkowski with Wells, but no. And that would be a county project, I think.
It's just adjacent.
That's correct.
Perfect. And then environment, or any?
Go for it. Oh, wait, transportation, no, more transportation, so sorry.
No, I have no transportation.
Mr Carrington, it's transportation question.
So, thank you. The, I wanted actually to ask about the bus stop as well, but in a different way. Does the bus stop have to be on the sidewalk? Can we envision bus stops that are, for example, you know, take away a parking space and they are then on Wilson Boulevard? The reason why I'm asking that is because I'm trying to figure out what, you know, the, how the future configuration of the surrounding of the building is, so that we have, you know, space for, you know, urban walking facilities and outside seating for retail, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr Board Member, I can address that question. Right now, I'm presenting the capital project and it's 30% design stage. And as you had spoken about, this project is proposing a floating bus island. So the pedestrian will not be on the sidewalk, they would be on an island that they have to cross just the bike lane to access. And the bus stop will load and unload within the travel lane and minimize any potential like pedestrian conflicts or bike conflicts with this island.
Excellent. I just wanted to elicit this, because I love this.
You know the answer, you just want to elicit it.
We bent so many times over to, you know, to put bus stops in difficult positions, and we take away walkable space, whether, and in this, in this case, we see on Wilson Boulevard, this has happened many times. There are many, many good examples of that. This is really excellent, that we can use, you know, one parking space, but we serve hundreds of people every day. Thank you.
I'm glad you're happy about that. That's great. All right, anything more on transportation? Moving to, I think it was the environment was next, Ms Cunningham?
Yep, we'll close with environment. Question for staff, we do usually hear from C2E2. Do we know why we didn't on this one?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't, I'm not entirely sure. They were a part of our SPRC process and were informed along the way.
Okay, and did they have any concerns that they raised during, or anything to elevate, since they're not here to speak?
I think, as alluded to, I think they wanted more EV parking spaces. The applicant is doing what our green building incentive program calls for, but there's always a desire for more, and they voiced that during the process.
And to the applicant, in the question of EV chargers, anything you want to share with us to bring us into your thinking, or what challenges you're facing, or how we might do better in the future?
You know, I think, Ms Cunningham, I think this just comes down to what we, what the site plan conditions actually obligate the, you know, the applicant to do. We are always looking forward to meeting market. And I think Brian and Fortis would want to make sure that, you know, if there was a market for additional EV chargers, we are going to be able to sort of future proof the building and provide those, you know, right sized electric panels to serve those, that need in the future, so. Hello, Brian.
Mr Eskey?
Yeah, that's right, nothing really to add. I mean, we were committing to, you know, the 4% onsite and then the 15% EV ready, but certainly, you know, we see market demand for more than that, and we just need to assess the overall capacity and then determine what we can provide. But we see the demand there.
Great, great. Could I follow up on that? And it might even be for staff, and I don't know if anybody's here to answer it. Are we getting to the point where there is so much demand for EV chargers, that part of the issue is, they might want to put in more, but the power, the Dominion power situation is not such that it's really very easy to do it? It's not particularly available, or it's very expensive? I mean, I'm thinking we might be getting to that. I see more and more about the electric grid being kind of stressed. You, nobody here might have that answer, but I just kind of toss in that as an issue for the future.
Yeah, good morning.
Mr Fusarelli, good morning.
Thank you, Board Chair Garvey, Anthony Fusarelli, for the record, with the Planning Division. I will put that, we will certainly put that on the list of topics for upcoming conversations with Dominion Energy. There are a number of other site plan and development related topics or subject areas, which we're looking forward to continuing our conversation on. We are seeing broadly that the needs of development, the electrical needs and the infrastructure needs are growing, and the amount of space needed to be provided for those are growing. And so, this is, as a specific topic, is something we will be sure to have an agenda for future conversations.
Good, I think that's perfect. I mean, and I think this building is all electric, right? I heard you say that, which is great. So, the E2C2 should be happy about that, but the more they go all electric, then we stress the grid more and more. Ms Coffey?
Yeah, just kind of a related question. I know you all are reusing the existing parking structure. Are there additional challenges for providing EVs while still maintaining the, you know, obviously, the current concrete structure was not envisioned with electric vehicles in mind? So I'm just wondering what the additional, we want more preservation of existing concrete structures, but we also want more EV chargers. And I wonder kind of where and how much conflict that provides.
I don't know if Jeff or Steve want to speak to that. Obviously retrofitting an existing concrete structure has its challenges. We have to bore for the conduit, you know, but this is something that, you know, people are now able to do, contractors able to do on a regular basis. Plus, you know, it's not so much that you have to put it interior to the actual concrete, you can actually run it on the outside of the concrete and not have an issue, but, Mike?
Yeah, I would just add that the way that chargers have evolved now, they can make them so they don't encroach on the parking space. The previous generation of chargers created a problem where it would encroach on the parking space, but there are so many options now. I think what we're seeing is they can do that pretty easily now.
All right.
You can put it on the outside when you're not in an easement somewhere, or we've got some abilities with this project that we found ways to get it in there. When you're planning a below grade garage, you have to think about headroom, not only for trucks, handicap vans, regular cars, people, but you've got to start thinking about ventilation, you've got to think about conduit, you've got to think about power running through there, on and on, sprinklers, so that headroom isn't diminished. Now we're bringing something else into an existing garage where it was not contemplated, what, 35 years ago for this building, but at the benefit of the embodied carbon that we have by keeping this garage. So we're finding ways to make it work at the end of the day, keep the garage, and I think it's, I think overall, it's a better situation, and able to make the EV charging stations happen here.
I had some more electric questions, if that's okay, yeah. So I think I heard you say that the building's electric except for the backup generator. Is that diesel? Is that what you've got for backup generation? What's your backup? Just curious.
Yeah, I think it's a gas, it's a gas backup.
Gas, okay, all right, that's good. And then, if at some point you wanted to more go solar, was there ever thought about that? Solar on the roof, solar on a window, that kind of thing?
So that is one option that we have been exploring, up to 12% of the roof area would be potentially solar and co-located with a green roof as well. But that's something that we're going to be looking at as we move towards CEP drawings, I believe.
Excellent. We'd really like to see that, I think, if we could. All right, thank you. Back to Ms Cunningham, where you.
I'd actually answered one of my questions, which was, one of our public speakers talked about more green roof area and/or more vines, and it sounds like you guys are still working that, but obviously, that's a goal for all of us if it works, so. The last thing I had was just sharing, we saw another project recently that had car sharing, had sort of electric vehicles sharing as part of their plan, and I just wanted to throw that out there in case that hadn't been considered, where if you live in the building, you have access to a pool of Bolts or whatever, or Teslas, that might be an interesting opportunity to consider. That's all.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Other questions? Yes, Ms Coffey?
Yeah, I too was going to ask about the green roof, because I saw some discussion in the Planning Commission from one of our commissioners about that. I'm just wondering if you could kind of, you mentioned the solar, but in terms of the green roof, and then connected the courtyards, kind of like, what is the plan for what would be in the courtyards? Is it, you know, a planted area, astroturf, concrete? What does that look like?
And I might defer to Jeff Krebs with ViCA on that. Jeff?
Good morning. I'm Jeff Krebs from ViCA. I'm a landscape architect, and briefly, I would say, the courtyard is certainly envisioned as having a lot of planting, right? The planting is going to serve, those planters that ring the courtyard will serve a couple of different purposes, one being to act as a, basically, a water quality environment for roof water that's being directed into them, so we can help meet our stormwater requirements. So there will certainly be planting in the courtyards. They are, one is south facing, so we anticipate getting good growth there, the other's on the north side, but we will still be able to plant as well. And it's not just shrubs, we'll have trees as well. So then it's got another layer of, I would say, elements that address the commitment, the owner's commitment to biophilia and meeting the county's goals in that regard. So that's the general, for the courtyard setup. The rooftop is somewhat limited, just because it's a wood constructed building. So there's only so much structurally that the roof can support. Steve can address this more, but they have made the commitment to get up to 12% of the area to, that can be solar ready. And then, the solar is compatible with the green roof, so I think, you know, we'll be able to meet both of those goals if that's the direction that it happens. But that's, that's what limits the more green roof, is the type of construction, so.
Great, thank you.
Hope I answered your question.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I think perhaps for Fortis, are the courtyards planned to be, you know, kind of unprogrammed casual areas, or more, you know, planned community space? I'm just not sure, kind of, there's many different types of courtyards out there.
Yeah, absolutely. And so we're working with Jeff through the, through the programming of that, but, you know, I think, we view them as more of a passive amenity. You know, we kind of think about like a zen garden space, some, you know, water features to add some, you know, water kind of ambience, but, you know, we've always thought, I mean, there are units directly around the courtyard, and so we want to be cognizant of the residents of those units, and just create an outdoor space that's, you know, a little bit quieter, maybe some built in seating, not, not really like an active amenity space.
Great, thank you. I would always recommend Wi-Fi accessibility for folks to be able to work outside. I know that's one of my favorite things to do, so I think that's all for me.
Okay, I'll, okay, Mr Carrington?
Thank you, Man Chair. So, on the biophilic elements, first of all, I recognize that the load bearing capacity of the roof is an important determinant of how much, you know, green roof you can afford. To be very honest, I have a, I mean, after, after long conversations in the community, et cetera, also in the environmental, you know, activist community, there is a forming predilection for green roofs before urban solar. Urban solar is extremely important, and it's an, you know, it's an aggregate important, but we are hitting a lot of other goals with green roofs, because they lower the temperature and they have other. And there is, there is, you know, technology and design that allows for lighter green roofs that accomplish more or less the same goals than the traditional ones that, they are extremely heavy. Now that said, I didn't understand very well the vertical green walls. They go down to the street level, and they will be, basically, you will be able to touch them or so. So is that, is that a viable design? Is that going to hold there?
Oh, I've seen them places, go ahead.
I've seen them places too. The only, the only thing that these places had in common is that this was somehow either a little bit higher than the average, you know, reachable height, or a little bit further away from, you know, where a lot of foot traffic happens.
So currently, there are planters, you know, built above ground, two to three feet at ground level, that provide the soil into which some of the plants could grow. The final design, we've been in contact with a couple of different manufacturers. There are some that are completely self sustaining, and they're vertical, and they are irrigated and maintained, and it's a, we've been working, we've been talking to those folks, they have a very high survivability rate. They mix a wide variety of plants in them to ensure some degree of evergreen and what would appear to be live plants year round, you know, so that you don't have just a dormant wall during the winter. Again, there are a couple of different ways we can approach it, but our goal, of course, and the owner's goal, is to make sure that we have something that is viable in the long term. So there are several different systems. Some of them are integrated more, as I discussed, with the architecture, the ones that are irrigated. So, the intent is to be, have them at ground, at ground level, right, that could be touched, right? They're, they're right next to the pedestrian experience, so that the goal, again, is to, you've got street trees on one side, you've got some live plant material on another side, and you feel more like you're enveloped, if you will, and sort of softens that pedestrian experience, particularly on a road like Clarendon. And that's, they're on the south side there, so they're on the Clarendon facade. So, again, we help, we expect that that southern exposure will, will, will help the plants on that side as well. So that's, that's the general goal.
Is there, is there an idea of providing something or installing something similar in the courtyards? The reason why I'm asking that is because often green walls are also used to mitigate noise and, you know, to, to make the courtyard actually far more agreeable to use.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And we have used them in the past to divide sometimes elements of the courtyard. In this particular case, the courtyards are fairly small, so we have planters around the perimeter, if you will. And as I think Steve mentioned, there are units facing the courtyard. So these, that planting border, if you will, serves to sort of soften, well, provide privacy for the, for the units, but also then, it softens, provides a little bit of, it's privacy, it's noise attenuation, but it's also just an opportunity. They're fairly wide, so it's like an eight foot planter, so folks on the courtyard side will have the ability to enjoy the plant material, but then not really encroach on the private lives of the folks who are ringing the, so that's, that's what we have room for in these courtyards. But you're certainly right, and we've used green walls to help divide courtyard spaces in the past. It is, can be effective. In this case, I think the perimeter. In this case, I think the perimeter planting situation will be the, would be the most effective approach to address all the concerns.
And then you have also balconies that offer the possibility of greening them up significantly. A lot of, a lot of operators don't, don't do that. I never really understood why. I understand the maintenance issues, et cetera, but if, if it's thought through, especially irrigation and maintenance, if it's thought through from the beginning, you can, you know, build it in a way that you, you get the green balcony pretty sustainably. And it looks very good from outside, since you, you went the extra mile to put so many balconies, which I appreciate.
There are some architectural, you know, complications with doing that. If you've seen the, the parking garage down by the, by the Costco, you know, down on 15th, that has integrated planters with irrigation, the whole, the whole sort of, it was planned that way. And it has, I think, over the years, people have seen, certain times of the year it looks great and other times it, you know, it has, but it is a, it can be a challenge. Those sort of built-in balcony-level planters can be a challenge without significant infrastructure to support the plant life.
Nobody said that biophilia is an easy thing.
I'm sorry?
Nobody said that biophilic design is an easy thing. It needs to be engineered to be sustainable. And if, if we think in advance of these things, they are easier to accomplish rather than trying to do that after the fact. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just another, I believe when you do solar, if you do a green roof under, the solar panels actually are more efficient. I believe I've heard that, that the, actually combining a green roof with solar panels over it makes it all function better. So just toss that out. And I, I hope you move forward with that. I, this is really more for our staff. We asked, you know, where's E2C2 or C2E2? And I, was FNRC ever thought to be included here? We've had this discussion before. I really think the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission ought to be commenting and ought to be part of kind of this review process. I've had that discussion with Mr. Klingelhofer and Ms. Haynes. And as you can see, more and more of these buildings, which is, we're talking about, green and the environment and biophilia, and we've got a whole commission that, that never comes in comments or comes later. And we have Mr. Byrne always coming for the monarch butterflies and talking about, you know, native species. And I hope you will actually do that, as you said you will. But I think we maybe ought to, on our side, formalize that process a little bit. It might be helpful to have the FNRC more, more, more included. Again, I won't be here, but that, that's something that seems to me is a, is a need and it's just interesting. And my years here, more and more and more, we're talking about this, which is good. I think that is, oh, I did have one other question. The much-beloved Roadside Grill in El Rodrigo, I, I understand you're in discussions. Do you want to talk a little more about that? I think people obviously would love to see them come back.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's one piece that we've heard from, from residents throughout this process. We are in discussions. They're currently, you know, leasing space at, at the property, obviously. And, you know, I think we view, you know, that prime corner as likely being a restaurant. And obviously, we need to make sure all the economics work and everything else. But we've always viewed that corner as being some sort of restaurant. And I know the Roadside Grill folks have various concepts and, and we've been talking to them about that. And, and, you know, we've started conversations with the El Rodrigo team to see if they would have some potential concepts. So it's certainly something that, that we have an active dialogue on.
Yeah, that's great. Because, you know, restaurants, restaurants come and go a lot. It's really hard to have a successful restaurant. I have these two that have been there for such a long time, although every now and then people get tired of doing restauranting. I know that happens too with a, with a restaurant that's been around a long time. Any more comments? I'll go, move to closing comments if that's all right. And I'll let Mr. DiFranti go first because we've sort of been talking and I know you're there, Mr. DiFranti. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you all. I, I really appreciate colleagues' questions and, sorry about the, the two-tone with the lighting here, but big picture, and so colleagues kept listing thoughts that helped make sure we're thorough and also helped with my thinking on the overall building. Big picture on the environment, all-electric. This is, I guess, a slight bummer that C2E2 isn't here because that is a very good piece of this. And so that'll be worth following up. I'll try to follow up with the C2E2 leadership, keeping in mind I'm not the liaison, but do want to just sort of elicit thoughts briefly. Environment, all-electric is excellent. It's also transit-oriented development, which is good for climate. And then separately, great to hear Mr. Carrington's particular enthusiasm for the question he listed in general transit. This is great. It's on the, this corridor. I actually think, Mr. Painter mentioned, I believe that this is a, that originally we've had some discussion as to bullseye versus spine. I would associate myself with spine development in terms of what we know now about the benefit of transit-oriented development is even beyond what we knew when we undergrounded 66, 40 or 50 years ago. So this filling in is great. I went to Roadside Grill a lot, have gone, so I am hopeful that Roadside Grill will come back. I know that their staff, who has a particular affinity for El Rodrigo, I associate myself with, hoping that that's possible. And seeing, I'm glad to hear the dialogue. And then lastly, on affordable housing, I think it's excellent that they're onsite, that they're family. I don't need to, I'd love for staff and just to resocialize. We did put aside a million dollars for 30% below units. And so how we use that money is a question that I'll follow up on. But broadly, affordable housing on this one onsite is great. So I think we have only had positive comments from our community and our commissions, almost only to, to my recollection, so I'm thrilled to support this. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. DiFranti. I'll go to Ms. Coffey.
Thank you. I am also quite excited to support this. I think, thinking about kind of that gap between Roslyn and Courthouse, you know, we have a number of places where we have, you know, as someone who lives on the corridor, it feels like dead zones sometimes in between some really great neighborhood core areas. And so I think in terms of the pedestrian experience, in terms of, you know, living along it, filling those in and making them as lively and engaged and feeling like they're really part of the community is such a great goal, especially when it comes with the transit and other environmental upgrades. I think, you know, relative to, when you look at the overhead satellite view of the site currently relative to the amount of concrete that's there, I think we're getting a huge positive benefit adding the street trees, but also potentially the green roofs, the courthouses, not courthouses, the court squares, courtyards. Thank you. And I think, you know, weaving that together with the affordability and a lot of other key community benefits here, I think it, it always says a lot when the only civic associations that come, that our neighbors come to say, you know, we support this. And I always love when we can get to that point. And so I think, you know, very excited. I also appreciate the complimentary remarks about our process. I think that's also not, you know, we haven't gotten it 100% right. So when, when we get those kinds of remarks and hearing kind of the timeline from your acquisition to this meeting, I think is pretty swift and indicates good things. I think we, we strive to be a reliable process that has clear guidance, has clear, you know, marks along the way that we can all hit and get together. So I'm excited about this. I think it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood and to Arlington overall. Welcome to Fortis. We hope that you'll continue to work with us in other projects in other ways. And I'm ready to support this.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Cunningham?
I would just echo what my colleagues have said. Really excited to have you guys here and glad the process went so well. So applause to both staff and to the applicant and to the community for, for making it work. So look forward to it.
Great. Mr. Carrington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Fortis, and everybody in our staff who's been working on this. I want to point out one thing that was interesting for me when I was thinking about that while we had this conversation. It makes a very big difference to house a family in a trans, in affordable housing in a transit-oriented set, setting. It is, the impact is enormous because this family will have, I mean, normally will, you know, they would need to figure out transportation for more than one breadwinner, for example, et cetera. And now we put them in a place where they have this additional support. And that makes their, this adds to the affordability because it reduces the burden on their, on the household. It makes a, a, a single-bedroom unit in a transit-oriented development setting is great, but a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom in a transit-oriented is, is just a potentiated grade, is far better. So I, I think that this was a key deliverable of this project among, among all, all the others. And I'm particularly happy about that. So thank you so much. I'm, of course, going to support my whole motion.
That's always nice. Good. All right. Well, I, just to sum, thank you so very much. You know, I've been, it's been 12 years I've been on this board and we've come a long way. This was such a co-op, this just feels so co-op. Thank you to our commissions that have helped, our staff. And you want for you to come and say, which people have been, applicants have been saying the last several years, that the process going through our planning commissions and our SPRC and all of that has made the project better. And that's what, that's the point. That's what it's meant to be. It's feeling much more like this is a partnership. And I think everything just functions much better when it's a partnership and people aren't just sort of pushing and pulling, which used to happen a little bit more in the past. So I'm just delighted with that. I'll just do one more shout-out to the green, all of the green things you're doing, which we didn't mention, was if you've got a south-facing wall and it's just a wall of cement, it gets really, really hot. But if you got it covered with leaves, it doesn't get so hot, right? And it just makes it better for everybody. So appreciate all of the good work that's being done and thank you so very much. Welcome to Arlington and I hope we see some milkweed and things when you do that final planting. Thank you so very much. All right. Alex, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. DiFranti?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Yeah, thank you so very much. Thank you. Welcome to Arlington. All right. That brings us, I think, to our next item. Mr. Kushner, could you call that, please?
Of course. There you go. Item number 48 is a request to advertise a public hearing on an ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 46, titled "The Arlington County Employees' Supplemental Retirement System II (ACERS) of the Code of Arlington County, Virginia," to amend Article 6, Section 32, and Article 8, Section 30, to provide a 1% multiplier benefit formula and a 2.5% required employee contribution for non-uniformed employees, employees who are not part of a bargaining unit hired after January 11th, 2025, to amend Article 4, Section 27, and 5, Section 31, to delete the option for newly hired employees in the Management Accountability Program to opt out of the ACERS pension plan and to allow the six employees who are currently not participating into the proposed new plan provisions effective January 12th of 2025, and to amend Article 8, Sections 43 and 52, to correct amendments made in May 2023 that were agreed to during negotiations for the current contract between the Arlington County Government and the Arlington County Professional Firefighters and Paramedics Association, IAFF Local 2800.
Thank you, Mr. Kushner. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwartz. I assume we've got a presentation?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining us this morning is Marcy Foster and Amy Rozier. I'm going to turn it over to Marcy to give us a brief presentation.
Good morning. Try your microphone, try pushing, let's see if we get better here.
We're going to share a brief presentation, but just want to remind you that we have been working on this for a little over a year now. This was a, an initiative from a prior county board to look at the benefit package that we had offered to new employees to make sure we had it structured appropriately to bring in the workforce of the future. There was a work group and a consultant involved along the way. Amy and I both were part of that work group that covered multiple department participation as well. And so the results of the work group were made public through the manager's budget in the springtime, and we are now here to bring that forward for advertisement and adoption. So the first slide, please. And the clerk just read all this information. So to implement a new benefit program for non-bargaining unit, non-uniformed employees hired in the first full pay starting in 2025, there would be no changes for any current employees' uniform bargained or general, no changes until 2025 for new hires. And a little used retirement option for senior management hires will be closed because a new option would actually probably be better for them. And a couple of technical corrections for the firefighter union that was a result of their collective bargaining agreement, a little clarity added there. Next slide. Okay, so why, why change? As you all know, it's a very tight labor market and we are trying our hardest to get employees onboard to serve the citizens of Arlington County. To attract that high-caliber workforce and retain them is a, a little bit of a different animal these days. We are finding ourselves competing at all different levels, probably less movement from local jurisdiction to local jurisdiction, but more movement from the private sector to the public sector perhaps. So while we look at the private sector as one of our competitors, there's a totally different benefit package, a totally different retirement system. And employees are no longer staying as long as they used to. So a defined benefit plan actually rewards your long-tenured employees. And so your uniform staff are accustomed to coming and staying 2025 years. Your general workforce does not stay that long. So when they come onboard, they're not necessarily focused on retirement so much, they're focused on pay and other things that are important to them, which might be leave as well. But we want to provide them, should they stay a long time, and we certainly hope they stay a long time, a solid retirement package. So we hope to be addressing the needs of the new workforce, workforce by offering them a strong foundation to a retirement program through a defined benefit component, but offering the, the flexibility of a portable benefit package as well. So the defined contribution plan will allow them to invest their own money and allow them the portability should they move on to another employer. Next slide, please. So in comparison in the region, we always look in the region to see what is happening to stay on top of things. In the region, Fairfax is a little bit of an outlier. They look most like us at the moment. Our other neighbors participate in VRS. So Alexandria, Loudoun, Prince William, other jurisdictions participate in VRS. The program that we are requesting to advertise at the moment is a little bit like a VRS program. So the current plan, and you can see that in our first column, has a, a defined contribution component right now and a DB, a defined benefit component right now as well. And the employees are putting in 4%. The proposed is not a change from that, but it is increasing the defined contribution component while decreasing the defined benefit component and allowing employees to put less money of their own into that plan. So they, by that nature, will be taking home more money, that they can reinvest through the 457 plan if they want, or they can have taxable income that they can spend on their needs, whatever they may be. But you'll see, there's still a strong defined benefit component should they stay with the organization and they need a solid foundation. And there's a higher defined contribution plan for those who want to invest their own money and have portable retirement because they may not be here long enough to benefit from that defined benefit plan. Fairfax is in the next column. They have a little bit higher pension multiplier. They have no defined contribution plan at all. And they also charge their employees a little bit more to get into that pension system. And then those other jurisdictions that we mentioned are in VRS. And VRS several years ago went to a structure where they had a defined contribution plan and a defined benefit plan together, as we are proposing. And they have a little bit higher contribution as well. So if you're looking at us stacking up in the region, we would stack up very, very well by offering employees a lower contribution for what appears to be, in this chart, a little bit better defined benefit and defined contribution package. There are certainly defined, there are certainly private sector competitors as well. The private sector probably looks more like a 401K where the employer would match a percentage of what the employee puts in. So when we worked with the consultant and the work group, all of that information was shared with the work group so they could come forward with a recommendation. This is the recommendation that was made. This is the recommendation that we are bringing forward for advertisement. If anybody's wondering what we do for employees who contribute and, and want to invest their own money, this would not be new for them. The 457 plan currently exists and we have really strong participation in that defined contribution plan or that 457 plan through Voya. Employees actually default in as new hires at a, at a 2% level, and then they increase their contribution as they see fit or as long as they're here. And there are all kinds of options for them to get assistance with investing their own money. money. So we have four Voya financial advisors, often onsite, work remotely, work in the field with employees. Through Voya, we have a Morningstar online consulting option. So you can use Morningstar as an advisor. And we have online programs or onsite programs to help employees understand investing their own dollars for retirement. But they're currently doing it now through the 457 plan. That concludes my presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. There probably will be, I think there are no advisory groups, correct?
That is correct.
And do we have any speakers?
We do have one public speaker. Give me just a moment.
Yep. And again, for those listening, this is an advertisement that's going to come back to us. So people realize that.
All righty, sorry about that. Our first speaker is Charlotte Mallarish, speaking for five minutes.
Okay. Ms. Mallarish?
Hey, good morning. Thank you all for being here. I work for Arlington County. I'm here as a member of the union, Ask Me Local 3001. I am not currently covered by a collective bargaining agreement, which is true of many of my coworkers. And I'm here on their behalf to reiterate our opposition to the proposed changes to our retirement plan. For employees hired after January 1st, the proposal would shift contributions away from the pension and toward the defined contribution plan, as Marcy explained. What's important to understand about this is defined benefit plans, like pensions, allow retirees to calculate what their benefits will be for the rest of their life. Defined contribution plans, like 401As, leave retirees with a lump sum when they leave the county, which is subject to changes in the stock market. If I happen to reach a retirement age in the midst of a financial crisis or a global pandemic, I am out of luck and my employer has no further obligations to me. The advantage that Marcy is describing in take-home pay for a library assistant like myself would mean another $30 in my paycheck. So we can think about whether that's actually worth the, the potential of not having a defined benefit at the end of my career, $30 in each paycheck now. The proposed change would also reduce the multiplier for pension benefits that are paid out. At the current rate of 1.7 per year of service, an employee who retires after 30 years earns a pension equal to 51% of their final salary. At the proposed new rate of one, the same employee would earn a pension equal to 30% of their final salary. Could you all live on 30% of your current salary? In fact, we employees would advocate to increase the multiplier to match the 2.7 that is currently enjoyed by our colleagues in fire and public safety. The county has argued that the proposed change would attract new candidates to working for Arlington because the 401A is more portable for employees who don't, don't stay with the county until retirement. In fact, current county workers are vested after five years with the pension plan. They can count on those defined benefits, knowing exactly what those payments will be when in the future they do retire from wherever they retire. This pension, in fact, helps to retain employees. Anecdotally, I know plenty of coworkers who have thought about leaving Arlington, but they're willing to endure because they're looking forward to those retirement benefits. Since we who work in human services, libraries, parks, CPHD are in the process of unionizing and will be negotiating our own contracts in the next one to three years, why make this change now? Instead of letting us collectively negotiate a retirement plan that works for us and our incoming colleagues, why force us to take a step, step backward now before we even get to the negotiating table? As you'll find in the research of economists like Teresa Giller Ducci, which I provided to you, pensions reduce poverty and old age, especially for women and BIPOC workers. Pension plans can fail in an economic downturn, that's true. But that's even more true of defined contribution plans like 401As, in which the risk is individualized. Arlington's pension plan has been managed responsibly by the ACERS board for decades. So let it continue to fund retirement with dignity for my future coworkers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallarish. All right. Colleagues, I think the conversation is now with the board. Ms. Cunningham, do you want to go ahead and make a motion and then we'll have discussion?
Sure. I move that the county board adopt the county manager's recommendation for item 48, as reflected in the board report for the meeting of September 14th, 2024, to authorize advertisement of a public hearing on October 19th, 2024, on the attached ordinance to amend, reenact and recodify Chapter 46, Arlington County Employees' Supplemental Retirement System II of the Code of Arlington County, Virginia.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Motion's moved to second. All right. Ms. Cunningham, do you want to get us started with questions? That's not necessary. I can ask other colleagues.
I think if people have them.
Okay. Yeah. Anybody? Ms. Coffey?
Yeah. So I think one thing, so since this is just the request to advertise, I know we will be coming back and talking more about it. One thing that I would just state for our manager and staff, it would be really helpful at the next hearing to have some, you know, example cases of like what are, what a proposed hire, new hire would be facing or considering in terms of the actual dollars under the current and the proposed plans. I, I appreciate the table comparing the percentages, but I think it's a little bit tricky for me to really understand what that means. And I, I appreciate Ms. Mallarish saying, you know, it'd be $30 per paycheck if she were to be under the other, the proposed change. So I think just having maybe, you know, a couple of, of income ranges, salary proposals and seeing like what, what would that look like for a real person? Kind of putting it into those more tangible terms is something I would find extremely helpful as we make this decision. And then the other question I have, and I'm, I'm not sure if it is for our attorney or staff or the manager, but you know, this change is applying to our non-bargaining unit employees, but we are currently in the process of starting bargaining with Ask Me. And so I'm wondering, you know, how does this impact the future bargaining? If they don't like the proposed plan, can they bargain back to the original plan? What, you know, what are the rules there?
This sounds like a Mr. Schwartz question.
So the currently, we have three recognized collective bargaining representatives, one for fire, one for police, and Ask Me represents the service, labor and trade workers. There have been no other groups organized. I think what Charlotte is talking about is ongoing efforts. There are two other potential collective bargaining units that could be organized under our ordinance. The ordinance has been in place since 2021 and I know they've had ongoing efforts for the last three years to organize. As far as I know, they have not succeeded in doing that. But assuming that they did succeed, we would then, as we had with the previous negotiations, we would then entertain any proposals they had to make changes to what was in, in code or additional changes. And I think maybe Marcy can correct me here, or the county attorney, any changes that would be proposed since they're enshrined in code would then have to come back to the board for final action anyway, even if I had reached an agreement with the collective bargaining representatives.
Gotcha. But so I guess what I, what I'm hearing, I think, is that if, if there were additional units to bargain with and they did not like this proposal, they would still have on the table the ability to say, this is what we want and subject to the manager's agreement and board approval, those things could come.
Absolutely. And we have in our previous negotiations, the last three set of negotiations, we did have discussions about retirement provisions. And so, yeah, we would, and that's what we talk about and we bring it back to the board for an opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's really helpful for my thinking. I definitely need, you know, again, I think the tangible understanding of what the dollars and cents actually look like for a real person would be extremely helpful for me. But.
If I could on that, and I'm going to ask Marcy or Amy, when we proposed the budget back in February, we had that information, we provided a few, I think, three or four examples. And we apologize if we didn't attach that to the board report, but we can give that to you. I don't know if you want to speak to Marcy how that analysis turned out.
The consultant did look at that with the work group. So we do have some examples which would be easy to get to you. There are some assumptions you have to make. You have to assume an investment rate of return, which he assumed at that point in time would match what the defined benefit plan assumes. And you have to assume, you look at salaries and years of service. So we do have those, but they, they do have some assumptions built into them that, but they would be clear to show you where, at what point in time employees would be better off or worse off.
Gotcha. Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, no, no urgent need for that at this particular moment since we are going to come back and continue to discuss it, but I think would be very helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey. I was trying to figure out what it was I needed to get my head around and that's precisely it. So sorry, I'm not remembering those examples from the budget discussion, but would be very helpful to have them. And maybe a few more. And actually I invite, I assume Ms. Mallarish is still listening, if she wanted to provide their own kind of, you know, analysis, how, how this would work with some case studies, be happy to see those as well. Mr. Karen Tonas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember vividly the, the discussion and for the benefit of our newer board members, I believe that we started this thinking around, you know, the thinking was based like our HR director just confirmed about how to make the initial employment offers more competitive in the marketplace through presenting the take-home pay as a higher one. Because, you know, if you lower the, the mandatory or the plan imposed contribution, then you seem to be taking more money home, the salary being exactly the same, right? On the other side, the county contribution is increasing as well to the 401K or 401A, right? So the question for me is the following. When we were discussing that for the first time, we were in an extremely tight labor market. You know, we were trying to find any way to attract, you know, uniforms, law enforcement officers, et cetera. Is that still the case?
I would say the labor market has changed slightly, but we still struggle in certain areas. We, we always will, those areas change. But there are certainly employees that would be able to participate in a program like this that the positions are still hard to fill. And I can tell you today, we have tough time finding engineers. Will that be the case two years from now? You know, I, I don't know, but there are always certain jobs that are really hard to fill. And overall, this is a tight labor market, perhaps not as tight as it was two or three years ago, but is still really difficult. And, and it's a shrinking labor pool. So there's a smaller group of people to pull from. So I think you really have to be creative or make yourself look a little bit different from others. And so, or maybe even make yourself look a little bit similar to the private sector so employees can feel comfortable they're getting a package that, that will take care of them and their family going forward, so.
You know, my impression was always that it is really not, we are not going to be able to, to really compete in all places with the private sector, right? We cannot adjust our payroll the way they do. We cannot fire and hire like they do and we don't want to fire and hire like they do. There is, there are certain attributes to the, to the public function, to working for, for Arlington County, for a public body. And one of the offers I always understood is that maybe the pay is not exactly the best or the most competitive in any place, but it's stable and you know what you get. You have this predictability. Ms. Mallarish referred to that. It's a, it's an important part of being a public servant. Do we find that, you know, currently this is not appreciated by applicants for employment with Arlington County? They say, no, for me, you are an employer like anybody else. You are, you know, kind of exchangeable and you have to compete.
That the, that the job security is not appreciated or the benefit package?
The job security and the fact that the benefit packet is, you know, highly defined and guaranteed. Because a defined pension plan begins to be a rarity in our country, right? So it's something that, you know, we talk very often about federal employees, et cetera, and even they recognize that they have a privilege of having something that, you know, I consider very normal. But it hasn't, isn't normal anymore since the eighties that we have the 401K system. Everybody's basically gambling their retirement. And if things go well, they, they go well. But if things don't go well, like we saw in 2008, for example, with the massive collapse of our financial markets, this is a huge problem, which is not the problem of federal employees.
So what we see in recruitment as employees come, you know, considering Arlington as an employer are very focused on pay and leave opportunities. The retirement plan does not come up at that point in time. They are really looking at what's immediately going to address their needs, whether they want to keep living in this area or they want the flexibility to be able to take time off to spend with their family, or they want to have a remote type work schedule or a hybrid type work schedule. Retirement is not something that crosses their mind. When you come on, when the employees are coming onboard now, they're looking for an employer for a short term, not for a 20-year career. That doesn't mean we don't want to keep them for 20 years. If we can, we would love to, but they're not focused that way. So they're not really thinking retirement and what will that retirement provide for me? So while the proposal is out there and has a strong base in that defined benefit plan, it gives them a much higher defined contribution plan that they're not seeing offered anywhere else. So the hope is that will resonate with them for a very small contribution on their part. Now, may, may not really add to their take-home pay substantially. Those numbers stack up really, really well in what they are looking at when they're coming onboard. But right now they're looking at pay and leave more than anything else.
Yeah, I, I kind of understand and I sympathize with them because, you know, just, just let's look only at the crisis with student loan debt, et cetera. They, you know, every, every dollar or the, the price of childcare or the price of housing, for example. I, I understand, I get that. Problem is that though, at the same point, I think that stability, income stability and defined benefits later is also part of the, you know, the, the value proposition here. And I'm trying to find what is more important, right? Just because we have this, this, this pressure points, does it mean that we need to change our pension system to adapt on this side? I'm not so sure. Probably we have to look at the compensation first and, and address these. But anyway, a, a second question, and I, I don't want to hog the conversation. How do we know that this is not, I mean, I saw the actuarial reports that only report minimal impact on the ACERS system, so on the main pension system financially from shifting, you know, several, a few employees out of, into the alternative one? How do we know that the alternative one doesn't become, because of all the stressors that we discussed, you know, more attractive and begins to really compete with ACERS and eventually, you know, reduce the contributions to, or the willingness of, of employees to participate in ACERS? If, if the marketplace becomes so, you know, precarious or the, you know, the employment scheme becomes so precarious, short, short-term, et cetera, then I'm concerned that we're building in a, a future weakness for ACERS and I'm concerned about that.
Hopefully I understand your question, but you can see that there was an actuarial report attached. The actuary did look at the impact of this new program on top of what we currently have and will show that the contribution will reduce over time. But overtime's a long period of time. It's, it's 30 years out. Doesn't, this plan does not increase the cost, but it will reduce the cost going forward. But that timeframe is pushed far out. The defined benefit plan is pretty much driven by investment performance, not dollars coming into the system. The dollars that are in there are so large that the investments are what's driving the cost or keeping that cost flat going forward. So the actuary has weighed in that this plan would have very little impact and probably save money going forward down the road. Now, those assumptions are made and they're relying on the stock market. So, you know, it's, there's a corridor that kind of buffers the stock market built into that. it's, there's a corridor that kind of buffers the stock market built into that defined benefit plan, but the stock market, if it really, really, you know, were to go south, could have an impact, but, you know, we tend to look at things over a longer period of time in the defined benefit plan, so the actuary will take that into consideration. I'm hoping that answered.
Can I just add two points real quick? Because I know I've talked to board members about this. We would have preferred, and I think we can talk about that, to allow people coming in the option of staying with our current system and choosing this new system. We were not afforded that opportunity under the Internal Revenue Code, unfortunately. So we don't have that. And I think part of your other question was, I think the current members of chapter, and under Chapter 46, won't have the option to, is that correct? They won't have, they won't have the option to switch out of the system. So that, I think, addresses part of the question. That's what the actuary looked at.
That I understand, but we have already departments that have significant turnover, and we see a lot of newer employees coming in. And if it's true that we are in a phase where, you know, the average stay with, in Arlington County employment tends to be smaller, then we will see a faster change of the condition of, you know, of the distribution.
Right. We can get you some of that information going forward, but the tenure of this workforce is not what it used to be, and that defined benefit plan really rewards longevity. So, you know, even though we've built a portion in for security, they prefer to have the higher investment opportunity.
If I'm recalling correctly, the work we did, and we'll share with you, showed the average tenure of a county employee around seven years, I think, and that the crossover as to the guarantee, the guarantee of the defined benefit and defined contribution, the money that you get out of it, started to change a little bit after that seven-year period, but we can provide you that information.
Thank you. I'm really very interested in that, because I believe that the public function should invest as much in attracting people as well as retaining people, and it's in the public interest, it's not just because we want to be a good employer. I mean, these are people who work in a completely different mission than when you work for a private company, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiFranti, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I appreciate Ms. Coffey and Mr. Karen Tonas' thorough questions. Mr. Schwartz's first comment regarding preferred to leaving the 1.7 option was my question, particularly based on Slide 2 of the presentation. I will note, I want to look at that slide in a little more detail. I mean, we still, first of all, we're not Connecticut and Illinois or California, and I'm confident, but not certain, I think Mr. Karen Tonas raised reasonable questions, and each of those states are doing better, at least as far as I know, but still, we've been over 100% of our contributions. I'm confident that we'll stay that fiscally disciplined, so I'm not super concerned. I know well the history of the labor movement's concern over sort of switching too heavily towards this. I'm a staunch opponent of privatizing Social Security, and I do think that we need to be vigilant here. So, this is a request to advertise. I am, because of the 1%, it's there, and I'm fine with advertising, I will have, have and want to do additional learning about the number of employees that are currently in the bucket. I think it's somewhere around 1,000, could be more. I want to do additional learning about the slide deck. I do see the equities that are underlying, and I really appreciate that Mr. Karen Tonas mentions, and I really appreciate Ms. Coffey getting to the, trying to elicit public consideration to dialogue the fact that if there are additional bargaining units, that would lead to a process whereby one could revert, or one could, you know, take up and reach an agreement that are more closely aligned for future employees with the current system. So I'd be inclined to support. I'm particularly grateful for the chair recognizing me, because I am managing a post, a baby who has had COVID and is in recovery, and so if I don't cast my vote today, it is only because it is safe to be here with you at the meeting, but I'm also trying to acknowledge that she has to sleep, and so I have to relieve my wife, and I think, I suspect that this RTA, at least, is going to be, there's going to be a lot of support at the RTA. I will look rigorously at the next step. So thank you for letting me jump in, Madam Chair and colleagues.
Thank you. I think you're warning me that if we don't vote soon, you're going to be gone. Is that what I picked up? Okay, thank you. All right, with that in mind, Ms. Cunningham.
Keeping that in mind, I just have two quick elements. I think it would be helpful when we come back for the RTA, not only to bring the examples back, but also to help us understand if one were to be not in a bargaining unit today, hired in 2025, and then a bargaining unit applies in 2027, just to how, what options you have as you move through that, because I know sometimes you can't go back and forth between the plans. So that would be a further example I'd be interested in. And then the other little thing is, different documents I've read say it's after hiring after December 29th, or it's after January 11th. I think it probably has just shifted a little bit over time, but when we come back in October, just to make sure all the dates are super clear. But otherwise, look forward to talking about it. Oh, and one other ask: The, understanding what you're hearing from recent offers, and both those that came and that didn't, just to give us more texture of why you feel this is urgent. I think I get it, but how many people have turned us down, and has this been part of the calculation? Any stories there would be helpful? And/or if, you know, for people who were hired in the last three years or five years, like, is there, is there some data that could help us understand what employees feel most strongly about, particularly for the more recent hires?
Okay. I think what you're hearing, I think we're all asking a number of questions, we're all trying to get our head around it, so I would suggest if, you know, we can get that information in the next few weeks, I think probably going ahead and scheduling maybe two-by-twos briefings with staff is probably a good idea, because I think we're all going to want to talk through this. And I'm struck by how, I think this is very generational, so I'm like, okay, because I have a federal widow's pension, and I am so grateful for that every day, but I know if you're 25 years old and you're trying to make everything, that day seems, I never thought I'd be this age, I really didn't, but here I am. And, you know, it's just, life happens, and it's, I think where you are generationally really changes how you view this. But then, of course, the situations and the circumstances you're dealing with are different too. So this is a very interesting conundrum to have, and we'll be, we'll be working on it more. One quick question for you, Ms. Foster. We're doing all this talk, we're not talking about health benefits. Those stay. If you're retired, no matter what retirement plan, you still have the health benefits, that's a separate kind of package, so that that's something that retirees can count on, correct?
Yeah, we are, we have no proposal here today that will impact the health benefits at all, the retiree health benefits.
So, and that, so that's something that stays, that actually is something that we can offer, that a lot of employers do not, which I think is crucial. All right, thank you. We have a motion before us. Yes, you may, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just think, I think the generational thing is very real, and I think kind of to marry the points about, you know, perhaps present bias in new hires' decision-making versus like thinking about retirement and all of that, like, in addition to, bills are really high right now, and you just want money to be able to pay that. I think there's, to me, there is also a feeling of like, well, I'm never going to retire anyway, so it's not super relevant how much I would get at that point in time, and the lack of confidence in Social Security and other entities is extremely real, especially, you know, I think people have talked about various Social Security reforms, I'm, I don't really believe that they're going to happen, but, you know, I think, in addition to just talking about how, you know, providing people the option to have more take-home pay upfront, I think it's also just kind of like, where are we heading in the world, and with the concept of retirement even? And I think this is a really complicated issue, that I don't totally know where I stand at this point, because having that, you know, defined benefit at the end is like, conceptually a really good thing, and also, I'm like, I don't know that I will ever reach a point where it will become relevant to me, and so, I don't know. I don't know which of those things wins out.
I said, I use the word "conundrum" for a reason. Mr. Karen Tonas?
I mean, from the point of view of the public interest, today, as we, as we are here, we are facing, for the first time, I believe, in Arlington, a significant issue of poverty while aging, right? Aging poverty. We have demographics that are now reversed. I mean, there are not enough young people to support any kind of systems, you know, from Social Security to, et cetera. The idea in the 80s of making it flexible, portable, you contribute what you want, you play with that, et cetera, has some inherent risks, not only for the individual, but also for society. This is not just, you know, an issue of individual choice. And therefore, I think that, I mean, we are a tiny, tiny, tiny piece of that, but we need to think through that very thoroughly.
I think there's a lot to think through, and while there is this issue of older poverty, my generation's got more money than any generation ever, and it's incredible, and I think there's a misbalance there too, but we will not get into that, it will never, we'll be here all afternoon, we're not going to solve that one, no. But there are a lot of discussions to be had. I think we're ready to vote, are we all right? All right. All in favor of the motion before us to advertise? Yes, to advertise these changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, I think, Pat, Mr. DiFranti, there you are. Aye, 5-0, we've got it. Thank you very much. Take care of Evelyn.
Get better, all together.
Yeah, get better. You can stay in for the next, next issue if you want. I think it will be quick, because, board members, I do have one more item that we want to address, and this is really a procedural question, that we realized that we would just like to kind of fix and make it simpler for ourselves and our staff and our public, and I will turn it over to our clerk, Mr. Kushner, to do a quick presentation, if you would.
Yes, of course, very, very briefly here, I do have a quick slide to present. But what we are proposing for you today is a modification to our 2024 Board Adopted Rules of Procedure concerning pulled consent agenda items. Just a little bit of background, as we recall back in July, we did a one-time temporary modification such that speakers would present their testimony in the same ways they would for regular agenda items, that meaning they would be called with each item rather than in a block at the beginning, and that they would each have two, three, and five minutes to speak, again, mirroring our internal procedures for other items. So the procedure's before you. Make that correction permanent. Essentially, now, speakers will now be heard with each item, and like I said, they will have two, three, or five minutes. That's just part of a broader effort towards making our internal procedures consistent with each other, and in response to some citizen feedback that these differing rules for different portions of our meetings can sometimes cause confusion or uncertainty about where in the agenda they're going to be heard, or concerns about proximity to, between their testimony and the item being called. So that's the adjustment. If approved, they'll be in place on our website, in our registration systems, in our outbound communications, in time for the Tuesday recess meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kushner, and I will go ahead and move that the county board adopt the amendments to the board's 2024 Rules of Procedure as up on the screen here. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, motion's been moved and seconded, I will speak to my motion. I think this is excellent. I've always been a little confused about this. It was just the way it was, and then it was actually, Ms. Coffey, when you got, we were in a meeting, and you got, and I said, yeah, this doesn't really make sense. Why don't we just change it? I think it's been confusing to everybody, so I think this is really great. Sometimes it's odd how long it takes you to do something. Perhaps we will have some people telling us that they really liked it the old way, I suspect not, but if there are folks listening and they want us to change, let us know, but for the moment, I think this is what we're going to adopt. Any other questions, conversation, Ms. Cunningham?
I just want to say thank you to staff, and thank you to my colleagues for considering this and moving it forward. I think it is, really will help our conversations be in real time, and I think we had a meeting earlier this year where it was patently obvious that we were, we were tired by the end, and so I think this will be really helpful, and I hope community members will find it helpful, and actually staff as well, as we move forward, so, thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Karen Tonas?
Just a note, it is absolutely logical, think, and thank you for everybody who've worked on that, Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Coffey, our clerk, on, you know, rationalizing that and making that consistent with the other. It has a downside. The downside is that some, especially on the recess meetings, you know, depending on how much ends up being on the agenda, and this is a variable number of items, some deliberations may go later in the meeting, so it behooves us to, since we started here with, you know, making the procedure more, you know, transparent, logical for people to understand, also to think a little bit about the timing and the times, and maybe we can find a way that's more accessible without having to go into meetings that go into, you know, really very late at night.
Well, we're always working on making sure meetings do not go too late. I'm not going to be here soon, but I advise you all to keep it that way, because I think it's much better to have shorter meetings, maybe more, but that's another issue, and that's, of course, that issue holds right now for all the regular hearings we have on Saturdays, which sometimes have gone really long, so it does still hold. Ms. Coffey?
I wasn't planning to say anything, but since everyone else, I just think there's also an underrated factor of consistency is key, and, you know, I think it, for me, you know, my reaction in that moment was really like, we do, we, many Saturday meetings, many public commenters, it all happens one way, and then Tuesday, all of a sudden, it's completely different, and so I think providing, for us as well as for our public, consistency across engagement procedures is going to help cut down on confusion and uncertainty, and also keep us, you know, on topic.
No, thank you. It's just, and I will just, this is another argument for change over time. Some of us have been here forever, just never kind of really liked it, but never thought about it very much, and it takes new people coming and said, why are we doing this? So thank you so very much. I think we're ready to vote, to advertise, about to advertise, excuse me, adopt this.
I will just note, Mr. DiFranti seems to have dropped off the line, we're seeing if we can call him back in for the vote.
He has, I don't think he's, I think he has left us, so he needed to stop, and I assume Ms. Corr is still here online. I assume we'll just mark him absent for the vote. Can we do that, Ms. Corr?
Yes, you can.
Excellent, all right. All in favor of adopting the rules, new rules of procedure before us, please say aye.
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 Your call has been forwarded to voicemail. The person you're trying to reach is not available. At the tone, please.
And, the motion passes 4-0, with Mr. DiFranti being absent. All right? All good? All right. Anything more to come before the board right now, Mr. Kushner?
There's no further business.
Excellent, all right, thank you, everyone. Board is in recess until Tuesday. We will be back here in this interesting room, and thank you again to our Arlington Public Schools colleagues for letting us use it on September 17, Tuesday at 3:00 p.m.
Great.
Have a good weekend.